Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Welcome to the March Meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our January 16 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any suggested changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Joan Caldwell, Chair of District 10.
Mr. Moderator, Members of Town Meeting. It's a fact, life is a series of milestones. Some of them are happy, some of them are sad, some of them are fun, some you'd like to forget. Last month, Brian Farrell, formerly of our district, had just such a milestone. On the occasion of his 80th birthday, February 6th, he resigned from the town meeting. And after 13 years, he said, "I'm closing the notebook, and I'm going to sit back and do some of the things that I've wanted to do." So from this point on, we're going to find Brian sitting down at the members' table at the yacht club, counting the waves as they come in, because he's a sailor at heart. In his 13 years, Brian served on many committees, as either an alternate or delegate. But the ones that stand out in my mind are legislative and rules, which made use of his legal background, on public works, and that surprised me, because I couldn't quite figure out what a lawyer liked about sewer pipes and holes and roads, but he seemed to like it, and brought a great deal of wisdom to the committee, plus he brought back to us excellent reports. And then, of course, he served on the Claims Committee with the moderator and then the many other members of this RTM. One of the things about Brian that I always liked was that he didn't suffer boredom lightly. And when our discussions in the district got rather tedious, he'd sit down at the far end of the table, and in a very quiet voice, he'd say, "Madam Chairman, I think we ought to move on, shouldn't we?" And we would move ahead. Brian had a quick wit and a good sense of humor. They're going to be missed in the district. Unfortunately, in the town meeting, he didn't say much, but we always felt in the district his leadership and his careful analysis of things. I trust that where Brian spends the rest of his time will be as pleasurable to the people around him as having him in our district has been to us. And I ask you now if you would join with me in showing Brian our gratitude for his commitment and his dedication over his 13 years with a hearty round of applause.[247.12][247.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Randall Huffman, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee. While Mr. Huffman is coming down, I would like all district chairs to know that there are copies of the most recent version of the District 10 proposed resolutions for Item 19 and 20 tonight, and those are up front. If you have not already, pick those up. Mr. Huffman.
Good evening. Tonight, I hope on behalf of the BOC to give you a brief report on the status of the CIP process and our involvement with it. I recently heard a group of people talking about CIP, and one of them turned to the others and said, "Well, really, what does CIP mean?" And one of them answered, "It means crisis in progress."[313.58][313.58](LAUGHTER). Another looked at him and said, "No, that's not quite right. It's actually now crisis in politics." Because the process that we've been through in these last few months has not been what the RTM had sought. We started talking about the CIP budget back in September. We first were given 48 hours' notice of a CIP meeting between Christmas and New Year's. The only other meeting the CIP committee had that we were aware of occurred in January. During those meetings, we were allowed to sit quietly, to be seen and not heard, not to have papers, and not to be able to take a copy of anything with us. What we had sought was, what I've said over and over, identified as three particular things, and that was early identification of -- not progress, but projects, naming them, making us aware of what they consisted of, then transparency in the process by which those were reviewed, scored, and came to a ranking. And then with a recommendation, an opportunity for us, the RTM, to review those projects on a timely basis in detail. What we've been subjected to is what used to be called an experience in growing mushrooms. That is, if you're growing mushrooms, you feed them manure, and you keep them in the dark.[450.75][450.75](LAUGHTER).
All right. Mr. Huffman, do you have something to report to us?
We now have a list of 85 approximately projects, give or take 20 million or so, that are before the BET to be recommended to us. If you haven't had access to this booklet or facsimile thereof, it should be available, and the information in it is available on the website. It lists the various projects that are being recommended. It has a project identification sheet with regard to them. You can see in, as you review those, at least a very sketchy description of what is proposed in each of those items. What I now call upon each of the RTM committees to do, along with the BOC, is to identify those projects that fall within the purview of your committees, and to give them the careful and extensive review that each of those projects and all of the people you represent have a right to, so that we can have, on this occasion, as good a review and as careful a decision on the scope of these capital projects as we have ever had in the past. And I know it's a big task. I know there's a lot that we're going to be doing in the next two months, but I urge you to, along with your operating departmental reviews, to look carefully at all those things that are set forth in this CIP list. Thank you.[568.82][568.82](APPLAUSE).
That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. And it is at this time that the moderators suggest a manner of dealing with the agenda items before us, based on the reports received from our committees and districts. Based on those reports, I did send out an email about an hour ago (LAUGHTER) informing everyone that -- or the district and committee chairs, that it was my intention to place on our consent calendar the following seven items. And I will, if they were -- well, I will come back and read them with more detail, but the numbers are Items 2, 4, 6, 11, 13, 14, and 15. I have been informed that Items 1, 8, and 18 have been withdrawn, so we will not be considering those three items tonight. It has also been suggested, it was the consensus, at least of two of our districts, to combine for voting purposes Items 5, 7, 9, 10, and 16. And that would leave to consider separately Items 3, 12, 17, 19, 20, 21, and 22. So at this time, pursuant to our rules, I will now place the following items on our consent calendar. And all items that remain on that calendar are voted upon without any committee reports and without any discussion. If there is an objection to the placement of any such item on the consent calendar that is supported by 20 or more members, that item will come off the consent calendar. All right. The first of the items to be placed on the consent calendar is Item Number 2, which is the appropriation of $120,000.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Buttell, for what purpose do you rise?
I rise to object to the placing of three separate items on the consent calendar.
Well, they have to get on there before you can object. So I am placing Item Number 2, which is the appropriation of $120,000, into an account for motor fuel and lubricants. Item Number 4, which is the appointment of Paul Toretta to be a member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring March 31, 2010. Item 6 is the appointment of Robert Greeley to be a member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring March 31, 2010. Item 11 is the appointment of Frederick Brooks, Jr., to be a member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring March 31, 2010. Item 13 is the appointment of Kristen Green to be a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2010. Item 14 is the appointment of Raymond Heimbuck to be a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2010. And the last of the consent calendar items is Item 15, the appointment of Jeffrey Raymer to be a member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring March 31, 2010. Is there any objection to the placement of any of those seven items on our consent calendar?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Buttell.
Mr. Moderator, while I salute you and the Chair of the Legislative and Rules for bringing us the consent calendar, I object to the placement of Items 6, 11, and 13. The reason for my objection are these are new nominations. These are people who are not being renominated, who are being appointed to a board for the first time. This is the one chance for the public to hear who it is we're putting on these boards. I think they can be familiar with people that we are renominating, but there are certain things you shouldn't put on your consent calendar, and one of those is new nominations. And so for that reason, I would object to the placement of 6, 11, and 13, and would recommend that they instead be placed with the combined items.
Pursuant to our rules, if there are 20 or more members who support that objection, those items will come off the consent calendar. Would all members supporting Mr. Buttell's objection to the placement of Items 6, 11, and 13 on the consent calendar please rise? Those items have now come off the consent calendar and will be placed on the combined calendar. At least I will suggest that that is where they go. Are there any further objections to the placement of Items 2, 4, 14, or 15?
Yes.
On the consent calendar? Dr. Carlson, District 1.
Mr. Moderator, Members of the RTM, I object to Number 14 on the consent calendar. This is Mr. Heimbuck's renomination. I would not care to vote for this gentleman.
Would all members who support that objection please rise? That objection has failed. Are there any further objections to the consent, remaining consent items? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar, Items 2, 4, 14, and 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, I will at this time suggest a motion to suspend the rules to combine Items 5, 6, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 13, and 16. Is there such a motion to combine those items for voting purposes?
No.
A motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of combining Items 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 13, and 16 has been moved and seconded. The motion to suspend the rules is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules to combine Items 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 13, and 16 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Now that -- so we will begin with those combined items, and I just remind you that the separate items are 3, 12, 17, 19, 20, 21, and 22. There are some sign-up sheets up front for Item 17, for combined items 19 and 20. Those are the District 10 resolutions. We can combine those separately. And Item 21. So if anyone is interested in putting their name on a sign-up list for those items, please come up front and sign your name. All right. That brings us to the first of the combined items, which is Item Number 5. May we have that resolution? Peter Crumbine, our Selectman.
Good evening. We resolve that the following named person nominated, actually renominated, by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring 3/31/2012, Susan Richardson.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 5 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on this, beginning with Franklin Blumer, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of Town Meeting, good evening. We interviewed, the Land Use Committee interviewed Susan Richardson at our meeting last Monday evening. She is, as you can see from the Expanos, first of all, she is being renominated as a regular member of the Historic District Commission. As you can see from the Expanos, she is currently the chairman of that commission. As you can also see from the Expanos, she has been very active in historic preservation matters, both locally and at the state level. She has been a very effective advocate for historic preservation, and our vote was 10 in favor, none opposed, with one abstention. District 6 was absent. The one abstaining delegate arrived too late to participate in the interview.
Thank you. Colleen Jenkins with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Regarding Susan Richardson, this is one of the strongest candidates we've ever seen. I'm slightly baffled why she's not a consent item. Her depth of knowledge in historic issues before the town of Greenwich is really astounding. It was a solid vote of 11-0-1.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 5. Item 6 now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine. Mr. Crumbine, feel free to take a seat up front.
Okay.[1201.01][1201.01](LAUGHTER). We resolve that the following named person, renominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed a member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring 3/31/2010, Robert Greeley.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 6 has been moved and seconded. Colleen Jenkins with the report of our Appointments Committee.
This is a candidate for the Board of Ethics. He has a private law -- he's an attorney with a private law practice. He is nominated. The interview was excellent. He's extremely conscious of conflict of interest. We asked him, you know, if you practice so widely in the town of Greenwich, wouldn't that lead to conflicts of interest? And he says that his firm has very strong policies regarding that, so that he's conscious of that. Our vote on Mr. Greeley was 11-0-1.
Thank you. Greg Fruman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Town Service met with Mr. Greeley on Tuesday night. We voted in favor of him, 12-0-0. He's extremely well qualified for the position.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 6. Item 7 now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
That was a lot shorter walk. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring March 31, 2010, David Ayers.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 7 has been moved and seconded. Jerry Isaacson, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. We interviewed David Ayers at our Tuesday meeting. This is a renomination for the Nathaniel Witherell Board. He has extensive experience in the areas of financing major projects with various corporations, and his degrees are in corporate financing and industrial engineering, obvious skills needed at this time in Nathaniel Witherell. He informed us, by the way, that Witherell goes into the new year with 11 fewer employees while maintaining a high standard of service to its clients. We voted 9-0-0 with District 1, 4, and 11 absent.
Thank you. Colleen Jenkins with the report of our Appointments Committee.
This nomination of David Ayers to the Nathaniel Witherell Vote Board is a renomination. Our vote was 10 in favor, 0 opposed, 2 abstentions. This person, we always look at board balance, and his contribution is in crunching numbers. The two abstentions were concerned about the accessibility to the financial information on which the future of Nathaniel Witherell is being planned. These people felt that they wanted more accessibility to that information, and that came out of the interview, a point made in the interview. Again, in favor, 10-0-2.
Thank you. Item 9 now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
We resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2010, Donald Heller. And I might add that Mr. Heller was just elected chair of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 9 has been moved and seconded. Franklin Blumer with the Land Use Committee report.
The Land Use Committee interviewed Mr. Heller together with Mr. Heimbush, on whom we have already voted as a part of the consent calendar, because they are both renominations as regular members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Both are renominations, and as you heard Mr. Crumbine say, Mr. Heller has just replaced Mr. Heimbush, well, he's just become the chairman, and the person he replaced was Mr. Heimbush. So it seemed appropriate to talk to the immediate past and the new chairman together. And our interview focused on their respective views on the role of the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission and of the commission itself. First, let me step back and say that we spent a bit of time discussing the time demands of service on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I won't take time this evening to describe those to you, but I think most of you are aware of the really very, very substantial time commitment that this position requires. Mr. Heimbush is an engineer and does not attach as much --
Are we talking about Mr. Heller?
We interviewed Mr. Heimbush and Mr. Heller together, and I'm giving a joint report on our consideration. We voted on the two together, so I'm sorry I have prepared a report that --
Mr. Heim -- I'm told it's Heimbuck, maybe, but I'm -- we have already voted on Mr. Heimbuck.
Yes, we have, and I made that point.
Well, I know, but can we just get the report on Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Thank you.
In contrast to Mr. Heimbush, Mr. Heller comes from a corporate background where planning is considered more important. He stated that he hopes to steer Planning and Zoning in the direction of greater emphasis on its role as the town's planning agency. He made the point that present planning takes only about 20% of Planning and Zoning's time. We voted on Items 9 and 14 together. The vote on the two items was 10 in favor, none opposed, with one abstention, with District 6 absent. The one abstaining member was concerned that on occasion, the commission appears to have already made up its mind on particular matters when they come before it.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins with the Appointments Committee report.
Don Heller is a renomination, renominee to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As said, he's been recently elected by the commission to be the chair of that. Again, he, as a leader, is intending to shift more time towards planning, and he discussed a 70-30 split. 70% would be on zoning issues, 30 would be on planning. And this is particularly good news, considering the town plan of development will be written in the next few years. And so this emphasis on planning is good. Our vote was 10-0-2.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 9. Item 10 now comes before us. Ms. Jenkins.
Item 10 is the nomination of John Schulman to the RTM Claims Committee for a term expiring 12/31/07.
All right. Since that is a resolution offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second and is now currently before us. Would you like to give the report?
Yes. John Schulman is, has an extensive corporate background, and we feel that his ability, his knowledge in negotiating contracts and such would be most useful to a Claims Committee. And our vote was unanimously in favor of him.
Thank you. Mr. Diddakis with our Legislative and Rules Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Legislative and Rules Committee voted 12-0-0 in favor of this nomination.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 10. All right. Before we move ahead, this being a nomination to our Claims Committee, we would like to alert the members that there is now one more opening on our Claims Committee. One of the members has resigned from the RTM. So once again, anyone interested, you understand what that committee is about. It actually meets and acts in place of the RTM in appropriating money to settle claims against the town. So some background in law, risk management, insurance is helpful, not required. And any interested member, you can certainly contact me if you have questions, but please get in touch with Colleen Jenkins, as it is the Appointments Committee that makes the nomination to the full RTM to fill that position. All right. Item 11 now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
We resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring March 31, 2010, Frederick Brooks, Jr.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 11 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Fruman with the Town Services report.
My report to my committee says that we voted on this item 12-0-0, and this should be added to the consent calendar. It's a no-brainer. He's well qualified for the position. That's my whole report.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Jenkins.
Frederick Brooks, Jr., and you should know that there's a "Jr." here, because we just appointed "Senior" to the Planning and Zoning Commission, just so there's no confusion. He's been nominated to serve on the Alarm Board of Appeals. He is a volunteer fireman. He comes with a great deal of background in fires and alarms and has already ideas about how to prevent false alarms. And depending on who you ask, 60 to 90% of the calls are false alarms, so that any type of improvement in that system is very useful, and his technical knowledge will be useful. The vote was 11-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 11. Item 13 now comes before us. Mr. Crumbine.
Resolved that the following name person, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed a member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2010, Kristen Green.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 13 has been moved and seconded. Ms. Jenkins with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Kristen Green should have been a consent item, in our opinion. It was 11-0-0. She is a social worker. She does work at Greenwich Hospital. She has been involved with geriatric patients up there. And so her background is very useful for Commission on Aging, which, whose responsibility is to disseminate information. As well, they'll be taking over the Senior Center, managing the programs there, so that we feel that she is a very good fit for that position. Once again, 11-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Isakson with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. We interviewed Kristen Green, who is the new nomination for Commission on Aging. She's presently psychiatric social work case manager at Greenwich Hospital. She's involved in several volunteer projects, including the G-Chip, the Greenwich Community Health Improvement Partnership. Several on the committee felt that she would be a very young and energetic addition to the commission and that to take on these new responsibilities of the Senior Center. Our vote was 7-0-1. Districts 1, 3, 4, and 11 were absent. The abstention of District 8 was because he felt that she was better suited for the Board of Social Services.
Thank you. Discussion on item 13. And the last of our combined items, item number 16. Mr. Fox, our Town Attorney.
Resolved that the sum of $450,000 being the same and is hereby appropriated to be added to account number A140-51400, professional and other special services attorneys.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 16 has been moved and seconded. Pam Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, ladies and gentlemen, this item was presented to our committee, the Finance Committee, by John Wayne Fox, the Town Attorney. He indicated that most of the additional appropriations is to cover costs associated with 8 to 9 cases. In cases of conflicts, where there's potential conflict of interest with the town, outside counsel is required. In addition, external counsel is also used, depending on the nature of a case, such as a current case involving broad subpoenas involving the Department of Justice. Also, the importance and, in certain cases, the specialization of a case. And an example of that was a current case that involves alleged discrimination. This is reviewed and determined when a case is opened, and this early evaluation is much earlier than had been conducted in the past. Mr. Fox illuminated a number of specific additional costs associated with several pending cases, which account for the majority of the increased appropriation. He also noted that he was budgeted for 600 hours this year, has worked far in excess of that, which we appreciate, and a certain amount of that has not and will not be billed to the town, he noted, 27,000. He felt that the current staffing, which includes 5 full-time and 2 part-time lawyers, is highly qualified and capable of handling the nearly 300 currently active cases. This appropriation will be taken from the Contingency Fund. The committee inquired as to the appropriateness of the budgeted amount, particularly in the upcoming budget, and noted that it's advisable to budget to meet expectations, so that we keep the overall budget within the BET budget guidelines. This additional appropriation would increase the Law Department's budget 7.6%, as opposed to what was anticipated last year when the budget was approved. However, the committee did vote 11-0-0 in favor of this item, and District 4 was absent.
Thank you. Ed Diddakis with the Legislative and Rules Committee report.
Legislative and Rules took this item up and voted 11-0-1 in favor. The abstention was from a member who had legal action pending against the town.
Thank you. Discussion on item 16. Mr. Von Keiseling, District 8.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the Assembly, my guests, my question is to you, Mr. Moderator. Understanding the valuable services that we get by contract from outside lawyers, in the case at present, I believe that our Town's Attorney is on a special contract itself. May I ask for you what the total amount expended on that contract for the Town's Attorney is to date, at least in round figures?
You're talking about in this fiscal year?
That's right.
Do we have a...
I'm assuming that this interim appropriation is being applied against this fiscal year. Is that correct?
It is.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox, do you have an answer to that question?
In this fiscal year, the amount spent to date is approximately $114,000. In addition to that, during this fiscal year, I have written off for the town approximately $20,000. I anticipate the total bill for the entire fiscal year will be approximately $185,000 to $200,000.
Further discussion on item 16.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, that brings us to the conclusion of our combined calendar. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined items, numbers 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 13, and 16. And proceed to poll your delegation. I have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items 2, 4, 14, and 15. Those in favor, 174. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, 1. The consent calendar items have carried. That now brings us to the first of our separate items, which we will take up in numerical order. Number 3 now comes before us. Penny Monahan, our Selectman.
Resolved that the following name person, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed a member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring March 31, 2010, Victoria DeBary.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 3 has been moved and seconded. Jerry Isakson with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Excuse me. We interviewed Victoria DeBary. It is a renomination, although she has only served on the Board of Social Services for somewhere between 6 and 8 months, but is now up, as you know, for a 3-year term. She has a PhD from Columbia in Educational Psychology. She has served as a school psychologist, and I can tell you that she has taken a very active role on the Board of Social Services to this date. She's taking a leading role in research of social service departments in other towns, so that the Board can compare itself in size and services rendered, which is an important consideration. We voted 9-0-0 with District 1, 4, 11 an absent.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins with the Appointments Committee report.
Our vote on Victoria DeBary was 11-0-0. As you may have noticed, the Department of Social, I mean, the Board of Social Services has gone through enormous changes. Victoria is one of the newer members, as well as most others are as well, too. We brought up one point, for instance, from last year's budget to this year's budget, there was a 15% decrease in staffing, and we asked why, and it was unclear why. And one would assume perhaps the Board would know. So it's not necessarily the nominees that reflects on the nominee. I think it really reflects mostly on the point that the Board has gone through enormous changes, and they are in a data collection mode right now. Again, our vote on this specific candidate is 11-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 3. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number 3, and proceed to poll your delegation? I once again want to remind any interested speaker on items 17, 19, 20, or 21 that there are some lists up here, if you'd like to get your name on that list. That brings us to our next separate item, which is item number 12. Penny Monahan, our Selectman, with that resolution.
Resolved that the following name person, nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed a member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring March 31, 2010, Stephen C. Francis.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 12 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Isakson.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. One correction that I think is being made anyway, but the Stephen here is S-T-E-P-H-E-N, so you might want to correct your call. It's a new nomination, replacing Dr. Turk on the Board of Social Services. His business career has been in finance-related endeavors, but he cited his family's long commitment to public service, and he has a very strong desire to serve the town. He served for 15 years on the Treasury Borrowing Advisory Committee, which advises the Treasury Department and the Federal Reserve on handling U.S. debt. Quite a prestigious appointment. He has strong management skills, which will be valuable to the Department, and he's particularly interested in working with the Department and developing measurement strategies for their effectiveness. He was strongly supported for this position by Mary Hyke and Steve Maxwell, who are presently Board members of Social Services. We voted 9-0-0 with District 1, 4, and 11 absent.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins with our Appointments Committee report.
Appointments Committee voted 11-0-0 in favor of Stephen Francis, a new nominee. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 12. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number 12, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item 17 now comes before us. Denise Savageo, our Conservation Director.
Resolved to delete Section 7-24 and 7-45 of the Municipal Code as written and replace with the following. 7-24, Fish and Wildlife. A: No person shall maliciously harm, frighten, or harass any animal, reptile, or bird; nor shall he remove, collect, or have in his possession the young of any wild animal or the eggs or nest of any reptile or bird. B: No person shall give, or offer, or attempt to give any animal, reptile, or bird any poison or any other known noxious substance. C: Fishing, including the use of nets or sains, shall be permitted with proper licenses only in those waters designated by the Director or his authorized agents. D: No person shall hunt, trap, or pursue wildlife at any time, and no person shall use firearms, air rifles, spring guns, bows and arrows, slings, or any kind of trapping device, or any other weapons or explosives to frighten, injure, or kill wildlife, except for the purpose of wildlife management as authorized by the Director or his authorized agents. E: The Director or his authorized agents may take measures which the Director deems to be in the interest of wildlife management, research, monitoring, or education. F: The foregoing provisions of this Section 7-24 shall apply only in parks as defined in Section 7-22B.
Thank you. So that's a substitute resolution. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on item 17 has been moved and seconded. Who will go first? Mr. Blumer, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee took this item up at our meeting last Monday evening. As you may recall, there was a similar item on our call in January, and we took that up at our meeting on January 8. The resolution would amend a section of the Town's Municipal Code to permit wildlife management activities that are not permitted under the section as presently written. Such activities include such high-profile activities as the town's efforts to manage deer and Canada goose populations, as well as less-publicized and less-controversial efforts to control vermin. The proposed amendment to the section, as it was on the call for our January meeting, was very broad, and we had a number of problems with it. And we had with us at that time Denise Savageo, the Town's Conservation Director, and Abby Wadler of the Town Attorney's Office. And we made a number of changes to the proposed amendment at that time, all of which had the approval of Ms. Savageo and Ms. Wadler. However, the item was withdrawn from consideration in January. As it appears on the call for this meeting, it incorporates the changes that we proposed in January and makes further changes, which we believe further improve the item as we now have it. Again, at our meeting on Monday, we had Ms. Savageo and Ms. Wadler to assist us. We were given the substitute resolution that Ms. Savageo has just read to you, and I will describe what the changes are, so that you can compare it with what's in your call. First of all, this is not a change. The resolution deletes Section 745. This was not in the January provision. That is a section that deals with beaches. Because 724 also deals with beaches, it was thought that that section was redundant. The change is to Section 724, if you look in, either in the call or in the Explanos, the word "use" in clause D, it's on the second line of clause D, a comma has been deleted after that word. "Use," "shall use firearms," et cetera. It's a verb that doesn't need a comma. The second change is a complete rewrite of "E." "E," as it is in your call, begins with the words "nothing herein shall prevent." It's now written in affirmative terms, so that it reads "the Director or his authorized agents may take measures which the Director deems to be in the interest of wildlife management, research, monitoring, or education." The final change is the deletion of that paragraph that appears after Section F. That was informational. It describes what is in 722B, which is referred to immediately above there. Section 722B is a definition of parks. It does not need to be repeated in 724, and so that was deleted. With those changes, we voted 11 in favor, none opposed, with no abstentions on the substitute resolution. District 6 was absent.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. All districts were present on last Tuesday night when we took up item 17. Denise Savageo presented the resolution. Denise Savageo presented the resolution, and Abby Wadler from the Law Department was also present. Also, animal rights activist Natalie Jarnstadt and her husband were present to hear our discussion and ask a few questions. Denise explained that she had a substitute resolution. The committee reviewed it, and the original resolution was also reviewed. The substitute resolution needed some grammatical corrections, which you've just heard from Land Use. In addition, the committee decided that it did not like the change of language in E. We felt that the use of the original language, quote, "Nothing herein shall prevent the Director or his authorized agents from taking measures," end quote, was preferable language as it states the intent of D more clearly, that the Director has the leeway to violate A through D, if necessary, in the management of wildlife, and he will not be in violation of the code. Abby Wadler of the Law Department agreed to revisit this language and to advise and get back to Denise. We then agreed to vote on the original resolution. Our vote was nine zero three. Districts One, Four, and Five abstained, waiting to see if there would be any changes to the substitute resolution this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Dedakis with the Report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Legislative and Rules Committee considered the substitute resolution only, and we voted in favor on that, twelve zero zero, as to legal order.
Thank you. Jerry Isaacson with the Health and Human Services report.
I won't repeat. We went through some of the same discussions as you've already heard. However, we always have a bit of a problem when we know there's a substitute or an amendment. Which do we vote on? And our decision has been to vote on what's in the call, because the other things have not been adopted. So that's what we did. Our voting was seven two zero. Districts One and Four and Eleven absent. The two no votes were District Two and Twelve, who will wait to see that the substitute is approved.
Thank you. Let me just address that point, so that all of our committee chairs are aware. The referrals are made of -- call items are made to our committees, so that the RTM will have some guidance when asked to vote on the items. If the committees are aware that some change will be proposed, it would be helpful to have the committee's advice on that, if it be a substitute resolution or a motion to amend. So please don't feel that you are restricted to just what is on the call. If you know a change is coming, the body would appreciate your advice on how to deal with such a change. All right, continuing with item seventeen. Discussion on item seventeen. Ms. Savageo, do you want to address it? You don't have to, but I would offer, as the proponent, I would offer you the first opportunity. Denise Savageo, Director of Conservation.
I just quickly wanted to go over a few things, because I did have a couple more calls after the committee meetings, and I wanted to make sure folks understood what we were working on. The proposed changes are language to an existing piece of the Municipal Code, basically to allow, again, for proper wildlife management. It's also to bring it into alignment with some other parts of the code and the town charter that allow for proper maintenance on our parks and also for nuisance control. So we wanted to make sure that all of the code, once we found this section, was in compliance. Couple of questions that I've had since the committee meetings, and for clarification, had to do with whether folks could hunt or whatever on town properties. And one of the things I wanted to make sure folks realized is, the town does not have the jurisdiction to say what the hunting regulations are, whether it be on town property or private property. The town has to follow all of the state and federal guidelines. So what we're doing in this particular ordinance is basically saying, just as you may give permission for someone to do something on your private property, basically, this is just setting guidance that, yes, we will allow something to happen on our property, but it does not substitute for what is the state and federal legislation, the statutes. We do need to follow all state and federal statutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Jarnstadt, to be followed by Sherri Wernicki. And the following speaker is welcome to sit at the front here.
My name is Natalie Jarnstadt. I have no objections to changes in the Fish and Wildlife Animal Ordinance, although they're still unclear and open to interpretation. When so much time and effort has gone into these changes, why not make them more specific and airtight? Why rush? I also realize that some of the changes were required, making town activities no longer in direct contradiction to the existing ordinance. However, this is not just about updating the ordinance. This is about, in addition to the ordinance, provision E, which did not exist before, and no one mentioned that this was an addition. E would give the Director and his authorized agents complete and total final authority to make wildlife management decisions on town-owned land. No reason or explanation was given for its inclusion. At the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, there was discussion about the strong wording that was originally used in E. However, it really doesn't matter how strong or how toned down those words are, the fact remains that E would still allow one person to have complete wildlife management decision-making, a person with no wildlife management credentials. RTM approval is needed only if appropriations are required. However, much wildlife management can be done within one extra penny. It also means that since there is no oversight or public discussion or input, these management decisions can go completely unnoticed and unreported. The added provision was never mentioned in newspapers, not even in today's Greenwich Time article, and the meeting was reported as being taking place tomorrow, not tonight. So I wonder how many people didn't get here. Unless E is removed, I urge you to vote no on the Animal Ordinance changes. There is no need to have E in it. And Greenwich deserves a lot better than this. Thank you. Mr. Moderator, would it be possible for someone to explain why E was included? Because no one seems to know. I couldn't find out.
Well, I suppose the -- I'll treat that as a request, a point of information, and I -- Ms. Savageo, do you care to respond to that? Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Section E was added to the code, basically, to allow for the Director to be able to allow for wildlife management, research, and monitoring. What we did was we modeled it after, and for those of you who were at the committees, I did reference this. Section 7-23 of the code deals with vegetation and also with other geology, the sand and whatever. And basically, it says in that section that you can't cut a tree, you can't harm any vegetation, you can't pick any flowers, you can't remove sand from the beach. But it has a section E in it that basically says that doesn't prohibit the Director from doing what he needs to do to manage the property. For example, he needs to be able to prune trees, he needs to be able to, you know, sometimes remove sand and gravel, move it from one place to another. So what we did, when we looked at the wildlife section, said this section right now, the way it's written, does not allow for the Recreation Director to do wildlife management. Indeed, right now, we have certain activities going on that have to do with monitoring that would possibly be prohibited, and we wanted to make sure that all educational, all research, as well as wildlife management, things were handled. So we really modeled Section 724 after Section 7-23 that allowed for proper maintenance. Actually, in terms of the intent of this ordinance change, it's Section E that is the main thrust of it, and when I discussed this at the committee meetings in January, that was the major discussion. We found there was some other language that needed to be changed and updated, that we kind of worked in some of the other sections, but E was the main section that we talked about, and it really is to allow for the Director to do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to lay the actual language that the Director just referred to before the body. 7-23E says, "Nothing herein shall prevent the Director or his authorized agents from carrying out proper maintenance of a park or constructing facilities and improvements as authorized by responsible town agencies." Further discussion on item seventeen. Sherri Wernicki, to be followed by Lynn Gorfinkel.
Mr. Moderator, RTM members, my objection was also with E. I was concerned with the wording that it does say wildlife management, which, in my opinion, I took it to be an absolute power for this Director that could come in and do whatever in the management, whether it be gassing geese, calling deer, or whatever, without public opinion, without the Board of Selectmen. I was not looking at it as pruning trees. So that was my big concern. I want to live in a community where I have a say-so in how wildlife is managed, or to know beforehand that I can voice an opinion if any of these issues are going to be, you know, taken. And I also was concerned with adding, am I talking too loud, with adding maliciously to 724A. I'm very concerned that it's difficult to prove malicious intent, and that may make it very difficult to prosecute cases where there is definite harm, injury, or death to animals. As it stands now, it does not say malicious. And I don't know how many cases of shooing, you know, seagulls off of a park bench have really happened, but as I said, I'm just concerned that it's very difficult to prove malicious intent. But E, again, was my biggest concern, that there's no oversight for wildlife management, and it does give the Director absolute power as they see fit. So I do urge you to consider that and vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lynn Gorfinkel.
I'll fill my spot for the next speaker.
Thank you. Further discussion on item seventeen. Peter Berg, to be followed by David Dechen.
So, Mr. Moderator, just listening to this discussion, since we have a Conservation Commission, and I'm not exactly sure if that's a reporting relationship, but wouldn't it be appropriate to have some language here that indicates that the Director takes these actions with the approval, or at least reports them, to the Conservation Commission? And I guess I would ask Denise if that, if something like that would be appropriate, and would respond to some of the objections that we just heard.
Well, are you suggesting that it be similar to 7-23E as I read it? The last phrase in that section says "as authorized by responsible town agencies." In other words, the Director is not prevented from doing things that are authorized by some agency in town. Is that what you are suggesting? Which is what 723E says.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, what was the term, Tom, responsible?
Says "as authorized by responsible town agencies."
In this particular case, though, I was suggesting that the actual commission.
So you want to name, you want to name one particular agency for wildlife management, presumably?
I'm suggesting that that would seem appropriate in this case.
Ms. Savageo, do you care to respond to that? You don't have to.
No, I think that's the will of our DM, whether they want to put that in or not.
All right, well, the question was, does the current Director of Conservation have an objection to that?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
All right. So I guess in that case, if, I don't quite know how to word it, but that we would amend, that we would revise this to indicate that the Director would do this with, under the supervision of the Conservation Commission.
All right. You're going to have to give me some language. What is before us? Proposed subsection E of 7-24 is written differently than subsection E of 723. So I'm not sure. What we have before us allows the Director to do what the Director deems to be in the interest of wildlife management, et cetera, which is slightly, I think, at odds with what you're trying to accomplish. So I'd need to have the language rewriting subsection, subsection E in its entirety. If you want to take, if you want to work on that, I can, we can continue with discussion, and I can come back to you on that.
Okay.
All right. Further discussion on item seventeen. Mr. Dechen, District Ten.
I had not planned to speak this evening, but I thought I ought to get up and address E. First of all, I think one of the points that had come up in the Parks and Rec Committee was the fact that E, as it has been provided here this evening, or read this evening and introduced, leaves ambiguous the question as to whether the Director, in exercising his powers under E, is allowed to violate in any way subparaphracts A through D. And that was, in fact, the concern of the Parks and Rec Committee. In addition, the comma that precedes "which" is patently wrong. I understand that there's a desire to leave the language in E in a positive tone, and as a result, Mr. Moderator, I would move the following amendment to paragraph E. Obviously, this is a member of the RTM and is not an action by a committee of the RTM. I would suggest beginning paragraph E with the words, "Anything in Section 724A through D to the contrary notwithstanding," comma.
You're going to hand me a copy of this, right?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Anything in Section 724A through E to the contrary notwithstanding. Leave the rest of the text alone, except that one would strike the comma that appears immediately before "which." And then, if we wanted to address the previous speaker's concern, I would suggest adding "after education in consultation with the Conservation Commissioner."
All right. Could I?
That's my, yeah.
All right. That has been moved by you. May I get that language, please?
All right.
Mr. Dechen has slightly changed his motion to amend following a consultation with Mr. Berg. So this is what we now, this is what has now been moved to amend subsection E of the substitute resolution. Yeah, I was afraid I wasn't going to be able to read this. All right. Anything in Section 7-24. Now, what is?
A through E.
A through E.
D.
I'm sorry. A through D to the contrary notwithstanding.
D.
Well, we're not going to ask Mr. Fox, because that might roll up the billable hours, but we might not have enough money in the budget, but, all right. Anything in Section 7-24A through D to the contrary notwithstanding. That is added to the beginning of subsection E, comma. Then the rest remains. The Director or his authorized agent may take measures, there shouldn't be a comma after the word "measures," may take measures which the Director deems to be in the best interest of wildlife management, research, monitoring, or education. And then add, instead of what you heard earlier, add "as authorized by the Conservation Commission." And then add, instead of what you heard earlier, add "as authorized by the Conservation Is that correct, Mr. Detchin?
Yes.
Mr. Detchin says that is correct. Do we understand what the proposed motion to amend is?
No.
No. Well, my question, please don't read more deeply into the question. Do you understand the words that I just, not, not do you know what they mean, but do you understand what Mr. Detchin is proposing?
I understand.
All right. Okay. This, this is what subsection E would, is proposed to say under Mr. Detchin's motion to amend. Anything in section 7-24A through D to the contrary notwithstanding, comma. Everything that you see there now remains, the director, all the way through the word "education," comma, as authorized by the Conservation Commission.
At the end.
At the end, period. Is there a second to Mr. Detchin's motion to amend?
Second.
Mr. Detchin's motion to amend item 17 has been moved and seconded. We will now have discussion on the motion to amend. Janet Lockton, District 7.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, RTM members. If Mr. Detchin could please explain to the body what "to the contrary notwithstanding" has to do with A through D. Does it mean that the director must comply with A through D? Or does it mean that the director still has the power to order management in our parks? I believe, well, if you'll explain, if he, if he still has the power, or he has to comply with A through D. Thank you.
Mr. Detchin.
Here, here's the problem with E as it's currently worded. For example, B prohibits the use of any poisons, for example. If there was a rat infestation in one of the parks, if, the question becomes, if the director is allowed to engage in wildlife management under E, is he allowed to violate B and put out rat poison? Because if you don't make it clear in E that whatever B says, the director can put out rat poison to kill rats, then you don't know whether the powers that are granted to him in E allow him to violate what is in B about not using poisons. So the idea here is to say, in, in the process of his engaging in wildlife management, he is allowed, no matter what A through D says, he is allowed to put out rat poison. If you don't have the connection where you say that E more or less trumps A through D, then engaging in wildlife management under E, he theoretically could violate the prohibition that is in B, which would also apply to him.
Mr. Detchin, is it fair to say that you liked the original language, "nothing herein shall prevent"? And this is just another way of saying that?
Yes, it's to try to put it in the positive, which is, I think, was what the sentiment of, that Denise had mentioned earlier.
"To the contrary notwithstanding" is in the positive. All right. Further discussion on Mr. Detchin's motion to amend. Mr. Boutel, District 8.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I am glad we are putting the director under an accountable body, namely the Conservation Commission. I think that goes to address, will the public have the ability to have some input on what the wildlife management practices are in town, other than just the budget? My point here, the problem, though, while I agree with what we're doing in A, we are then gonna have to go back and address D. The last section in D deals with "except for the purpose of wildlife management as authorized by the director or his authorized agents." So even if we pass this in E, hunting and all the rest is given exclusively to the director without oversight. So if we pass this, and I don't, we, I know traditionally we don't accept amendments to amendments, but if this amendment passes, I will then rise and suggest that given we, that we have passed E, we need to strike the last clause, namely in D, "except through agents." Otherwise, the director would still have sole authority as regards those items mentioned and referenced in D. So just to make the body aware of that. If we adopt this, we're not done yet. Thank you.
Mr. Boutel is correct that although secondary motions to amend are permitted under Roberts' rules, our practice is not to permit them because of the confusion, the high confusion quotient. However, we do accept motions to refer while motions to amend are pending. So, further discussion on the motion to amend. Mr. Tuthill, District 3.
I move this, I move to refer this item to-
Could you-
The Legislative-
Please rise.
I move to refer this item to the Legislative and Rules Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to refer item 17 to the Legislative and Rules Committee. That motion is debatable. Discussion on Mr. Tuthill's motion to refer.
Question.
Yes, in District 2. Sure, please come forward. Speaking on the motion to refer to the Legislative and Rules Committee.
C.C. Morgan, District 2. When this first came up before us a couple of months ago, the only discussion that I had was with our district until it came to the full RTM. And at that point, the E clause still seemed to be the problem. Tonight, not only is the E clause still a problem, but thanks to Natalie Arnstadt's letter, the whole thing seems to be a problem. And, and I think that it doesn't have a focus that we can vote on tonight. I'm not sure sending it back to Legislative and Rules is exactly where it belongs, since they're really dealing with the legalities of it. And I would certainly hope that somebody might have a suggestion as to where else it might go before it comes back to us again. Thank you.
Further discussion on Mr. Tuthill's motion to refer to the Legislative and Rules Since this is a procedural matter, I will call for a voice vote. If you are in favor of sending this to Legislative and Rules, you should vote aye. If you are opposed and want to consider, continue considering this tonight, you should vote no. All those in favor of referring item 17 to our Legislative and Rules Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion to refer has carried. So item 17 is now in the hands of our Legislative and Rules Committee. I do have the results of the vote on the combined items. Those were items 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 13, and 16. Those in favor, 178. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, 5. The combined items have carried. The vote on item 3, which was the appointment of Victoria DeBarry to the Board of Social Services, those in favor, 182. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, 1. That item has carried. The vote on item 12, which was the appointment of Stephen Francis to the Board of Social Services, those in favor, 180. Opposed, 0. Abstaining, 0. That item has carried. The next item to come before us is item 19. We can combine 19 and 20 if we believe it appropriate. Is that-
That's what a motion I wanted to make.
All right. Why don't we get the first one before us, and then we'll, we'll take care of it. Bob Richardson of District 10.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have a substitute resolution for you. Essentially, the call, the text of the call, item 19, is unchanged. The only thing that has changed is footnote 1. But we have a new resolution that covers that. It expands footnote 1 and gives you the statutory definitions that apply. Otherwise, Mr. Moderator, it is as it is on the call.
All right. Before calling for the committee reports, I would, oh, well, let me just ask. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 19 has been moved and seconded. It is now before us. Mr. Tuthill, District 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that items 19 and 20 be combined for purposes of voting.
All right. So that is a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of combining items 19 and 20 for voting purposes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. The effect of adopting Mr. Tuthill's motion is that we would take items 19 and 20 up and vote on them together, but we could consider them separately. We can amend one, we could amend both, we could do nothing. So, all those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of combining items 19 and 20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. Mr. Richardson, could you please place item 20 before us as well?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I have a substitute for item 20 as well. The text, again, is the same as item 20 on the call. The difference here is that two footnotes have been added. And the purpose of the first footnote is to create a cross-reference to the statutory definitions in item 19.
Thank you. And I should have noted, this is offered on behalf of one of our districts, so it does not require a second, and is currently before us. So items 19 and 20 are before us. May we have the committee reports on this, since this- Mr. Boutel.
Point of order, like a, a item that is referred to as, should we not have the vote of the district that is referring it by its steward? Otherwise, there's some chance that the item was not being added.
Well, we can get that later, but no, we don't get reports. That would be in the nature of a report of the district. All we want when a presenter puts a resolution before us is a summary or a reading of the resolution. And I'll remind presenters of resolutions, it is not necessary to read verbatim. The item can simply be summarized. All right. This was referred to all of our committees, so please place yourselves in a desired order. Who would like to go first? Mr. Isaacson with the report of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our committee participated in the joint presentation with other committees on the Tuesday night list, and then went to our committee room for discussion. Since it was our committee that proposed referring the original back to District 10, several of us did believe that District 10 had made significant changes in line with our request, and the majority believed it should be incorporated in the appendix to the RTM rules. Our vote was 5 to 1. District 9 abstained because she had not come to a conclusion. District 8 voted no because he felt it violated free speech. And District 2 voted no because she wanted to see the final version at the RTM meeting.
Thank you. Our next report is from Bob Brady, Chair of our Education Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members and guests. The Education Committee met with the, with District 10 in its information meeting last Monday night, and then adjourned to its regular meeting room to consider the item. Our vote was 11-0-0 in favor of the item, with District 4 unrepresented. We considered several things about it. The, first of all, the, we felt this was useful in that it called attention of the RTM to the issues of conflict of interest and the state statute, which requires action or requires demearing from action under certain circumstances. And this is a clear definition of that, and it is in front of us. Second, this is amendment to our, not to our rules, but to the appendix to our rules, which is really the way we implement our rules. And so while very significant in that it points out what a conflict is and what we may do under the circumstances, it is primarily offering guidance to what to do in the event a, a conflict is suspected. But it is only guidance. In any event, we voted 11-0-0 in favor of the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huffman with the report of the Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. Budget Overview Committee took this up at its regular meeting on March the 6th. Some of the members had heard the presentation that evening with regard to the joint presentation by District 10. We were made aware of some amendments that had been made to resolution that had said had earlier been presented. In the BOC, the discussion followed that while several people felt that the District 10 representatives had made a substantial effort here to clarify some very difficult and troubling at times issues, others felt that this was really an unnecessary exercise in an amendment to the rules. And following our discussion, the vote of the BOC was four in favor, four against, no abstainings, four districts absent.
Thank you. Ed Dodakis, Vice Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Legislative and Rules Committee met to take up both item 19 and item 20. We were assisted by Mr. Richardson from District 10, who presented both of these items and did note, as he did in the substitute resolution this evening, that, that the footnotes would be added. With regards to item 19, most of our discussion focused on the last sentence of paragraph D, which says, "He should not try to influence," as opposed to "inform others on the relevant matter," and he may not vote on it. Mr. Richardson pointed out that that wording was taken almost verbatim from a ethics ruling, which was delivered recently on a similar subject, so that's why they put it in there. However, we did have a great deal of discussion on that item. I think pretty much the committee was united that a person who had such a conflict should certainly not vote on the item, but many also felt that everyone should have the ability to speak on that subject as long as their conflict is disclosed. Others had pointed out in the discussion that that prohibition on debate is not brand-new in that last sentence, but rather was addressed earlier in paragraph D, in the third line where it says, "Members will properly abstain from voting upon or advocating any measure." But nonetheless, the committee has offered us the following amendment. We have proposed that we should eliminate the last sentence of paragraph D, which I previously read. If anyone wants me to read it again, I will. And also to eliminate the words, now, I'm looking at the substitute resolution, which begin the third line of paragraph D, the words "or advocating." Therefore, that sentence will now read, "Members will properly abstain from voting upon any measure in which they have a substantial conflict of interest." And it was felt that that, that wording as it exists now was sufficient, that a person would not vote on such a matter, that they had a substantial conflict. And we voted on the amendment, 10 in favor, 2 against, with no abstentions. And we voted on item 19 as amended, 12-0-0. We then, Mr. Moderator, took up discussion on item 20, and the committee felt that the wording at the end of paragraph A3 regarding getting a-
I think that's B3.
Is that B3?
Yeah. It's, there may have been a mislabeling in an earlier version, but-
Okay, so that would be B3. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Which is basically that last portion of the sentence, which begins, "In light of which the district may wish but is not obliged to reconsider its vote on the members' committee assignment." Basically, what this does is it says if a, if a, if someone has been denied a committee assignment because of a conflict, they can take it to the Board of Ethics and get a ruling from the- of a conflict, they can take it to the Board of Ethics and get a ruling from the Board of Ethics. And then it was felt by our committee that to come back to your district and to ask for a reconsideration of that item was not appropriate parliamentary procedure, because an item cannot be reconsidered that far after it has actually taken place. We're assuming it would take several months to get the Board of Ethics report on that. So we voted to delete that item, twelve zero zero, and pass the rest of the amendment, pass the rest of that section, that item twenty as amended, twelve zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Dodakis. After all the committees have reported, I will recognize you to offer those amendments. Thank you. Mr. Robert Cavey, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
First, I'd like to point out our regrets that our Vice Chairman, Brian Faro, has resigned from the RTM. He was an excellent contributor to our committee, and he was our Vice Chairman. All right. All districts, we treated item nineteen and twenty as combined items. Two of the members discussed the last sentence in paragraph D, as it appears on the call, and there were some questions as whether this alternative was preferable, and it happens to be the exact opposite of the amendment that was proposed just now. He should not try -- the last sentence should read, "He should not try to opaquely influence." And that means he should be transparent, and he may not vote on it, should be deleted. There was only two members that entered the discussion on this issue, and their reasons was that there exist issues which generate conflicts of interest to all voting members of the RTM, particularly those which disproportionately allocate taxation to specific individuals. That was what one member said. Furthermore, another member spoke before the -- furthermore, those members who speak before the RTM may properly disclose potential conflicts of interest, and then by choice of conviction and conscience, vote contrary to their confliction. These people would be denied the right to vote. Well, anyway, there was no motion made on the call by the committee, and the committee voted eleven zero zero in favor of both items, with District One absent.
Thank you. Greg Crumman with the report of our Town Services Committee.
Town Services took up items nineteen and twenty together, and we took two votes. The first, we voted on the item as it appears before us currently, which is the current version, and then we voted on the proposed legislative and rules changes. As presented, we voted in favor of this item, eight four zero. With the legislative and rules proposed changes, we voted in favor of this item, eleven one zero. Overall, the committee felt that the work of District Ten was well-done and will serve as an important guide for the conduct of our RTM members in the future. It was pointed out to us that without such guidance within our own rules, the Board of Ethics cannot be expected to guide us on behavior that we have chosen not to address within our own rules. We also felt that this was a wonderful starting point, and if the RTM chooses to give this appendix section some teeth in the future, we may certainly do so. Two of the no votes on the as-presented items were opposed to some of the language. In each case, the no votes were changed to yes votes when we considered the legislative and rules changes. One of the yes votes on the as-presented, obviously, was changed to a no vote with the legislative and rules changes. This person objected to the removal of the word "influence" and felt it should remain. Overall, the committee felt that these changes to the appendix of the rules of the RTM were good and represented a matter of practicality.
Thank you. Franklin Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee attended the information session sponsored by District Ten last Monday evening, and we then adjourned to our regular meeting room. We took up items nineteen and twenty together. Our vote was ten in favor, none opposed, with no abstentions. District One and Districts One and Six were absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Jenkins with the Appointments Committee report.
The Appointments Committee voted four in favor, one against, and six abstentions. We are aware that there were a number of amendments, although we did not have the exact wording before us. Probably a lot of these abstentions will be converted to regular votes once we have them before us. Basically, this whole thing is about a balancing act between conflict of interest and freedom of speech, and that's what our discussion was about. And as you know, the Appointments Committee interviews nominees to 150 positions on boards, commissions, agencies. So we invite anybody, RTM members, town employees, general public, anybody, to express their opinions about the nominees before us. So we don't want to restrict free speech, but before they speak, we would like to know if they have a conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest upfront. Once that's said, they can basically say anything they want. So I think that once we get the amendments, you'll see more definition in our votes. Once again, it was one in favor -- sorry, four in favor, one against, and six abstentions.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon with the Parks and Recreation Committee report.
We met in a joint session with everyone else on Tuesday, then we convened as a committee in terms of -- we took the items up separately. Regarding item nineteen, the committee agreed with the basic issue of conflict of interest, but there was some concern over the last sentence in D, "He should not try to influence," as opposed to "inform others on the relevant matter." Some felt, a couple of members, that this was suggesting that a member could not speak, which felt it was adequate to say they would not be voting. Therefore, the vote was ten zero two, with Districts One and Four abstaining, to see if there would be any changes to that language. We then looked at twenty. The committee was comfortable with the material in item number twenty, with the understanding that there was going to be an amendment from the Legislative and Rules Committee to the last sentence in A three, not knowing specifically what it was, but we voted twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Pam Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee met along with the joint sessions on Monday. Our discussions were very much similar to the other reports that have been given, with one exception. The vote was ten zero one, with District Four absent, District Eight abstained due to vagueness in the use of potential and possible conflict, and preferred that a specific conflict exist. The balance of the committee, however, agreed that with the language as it stood and felt that it provided greater flexibility in addressing conflict situations, which often are in gray areas where judgment is needed. So again, our vote was ten zero one, with District Four absent and District Eight abstaining.
Thank you. Ben Stamarco, Chair of our Transportation Committee.
The Transportation Committee participated in the Tuesday night joint session on these items. The committee discussed each item and the amendments to be proposed this evening. Members agreed that the effect of the resolutions has been diminished by the amendments being limited to the appendix of the rules, to the extent that it will achieve little of its original intent. However, the committee did feel the amended resolution would add merit to the rules as amended. Feeling there was no sense in voting on the items separately, the committee combined the items and voted on them as they would be amended tonight. Vote was eight zero zero, with Districts Four, Seven, Ten, and Twelve absent.
Thank you. Mr. Dodakis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to move on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee the following amendment, item nineteen, in paragraph D, line three of the substitute resolution that you were handed out tonight, to eliminate the words "or advocating," and continuing down in that same paragraph, to eliminate the last sentence, which begins, "He should not try."
Thank you. Since that is offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Is everyone clear as to what this proposed motion to amend involves? Discussion on that motion to amend. Ms. Bergweger, District Eight. Mr. Crowell.
Point of information, who you are in the Congress party, for the record, I would just like confirmation that members that may not have, may currently have, or may proceed to have in the future, a conflict of interest, may participate in debate and vote on their side.
That is correct.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I'm Kip Bergweger, District Eight, and I'm speaking in favor of the Legislative and Rules Committee amendment. This is not an easy issue. Been strong feelings on both sides, but I believe this amendment is the better course for the RTM to follow. As the Appointments Committee Chair mentioned, I think it is important to maximize the opportunities for the RTM to obtain as much information on any subject that may be before it as is possible. And by limiting the ability of members to appear, you limit your ability to obtain relevant information. Now, we must have full disclosure of any substantial conflict of interest. That's a given. But once that disclosure has been made, a member ought to be able to speak. Now, this revised resolution incorporates state law into our rules, and the question is, to what extent does state law limit our ability to allow our members to speak freely? And if you look at the provisions in the rules, you'll note that the state provides that a person with a substantial conflict of interest cannot take official action. So what is official action? Well, it can't mean speaking, because any member of the general public is entitled to come before a committee, or the RTM as a whole, or the district, and make a presentation. So that is not official. It has to be an official act, if it's prohibited by state law. So the right to speak is not prohibited by state law, and I do not believe that we should adopt rules that are more restrictive than the state law requires. And in fact, if we included, if we did not make this amendment, these provisions would be inconsistent with other provisions in the appendix. For example, appendix D two says that the role of a committee is to engage in searching discussion and analysis of an item. There should be no restraint to thorough discussion, because on the state, anyone, RTM member or otherwise, who may have an interest in an item for consideration, is strongly encouraged to participate in discussion on the item. And it further says that committees with oversight of town departments should maintain knowledge about the operations of those town departments. What better way to learn about a department's operation than to have an employee who is engaged daily in the operation of a department? As long as there is a full disclosure of that, of any substantial conflict, all the members of the RTM are more than capable of evaluating what that person has to say and making their own good judgment. So I strongly urge you to support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend pending before us on item nineteen. Mr. Richardson, District Ten.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, the members of District Ten have considered the two-part amendment to item nineteen that Legislative and Rules has proposed, and we recommend against it. The principal motivation for the amendment, as we understand it, was to promote free expression, that is, the exercise of free, the right of free speech within the RTM. But the right of free speech is not an unlimited right, and the language which we proposed, as well as the language already in the appendix, must be understood strictly within the context of a substantial conflict of interest in which the member stands to have a direct or financial gain or a direct financial loss. Under those circumstances, we think it's reasonable to limit that member's speech. Second, our proposal is consistent with the Town Code of Ethics. Paragraph number four of the Town Code of Ethics is entitled, "Improper Influence." No town officer having a substantial financial interest in any transaction with the town, or in any transaction to be taken by the town, shall use his office to exert his influence or to vote on such transaction or action. If we were to adopt the Legislative and Rules amendment, we would be effectively creating an exception within the Town Code of Ethics for members of the RTM. I don't think that that has adequately been addressed by the members of Legislative and Rules in their discussion, and I don't think it's really their intention. Third, in the November 2006 Board of Ethics Advisory Opinion concerning RTM service, there is heavy reliance on the paragraph number four, which I just read to you. If we adopt the Legislative and Rules amendment, we will effectively negate two of the key portions of the Ethics opinion. I don't think that's our intention also, to negate the opinion of the Board of Ethics by inadvertently adopting this provision. I think that there's been -- the gentleman from District Eight made some good points. But again, speech is not something that is an absolute right. It has to be understood within context, and we all have a job here to do, and if we have a substantial conflict of interest, it seems to us that we should refrain from trying to influence our colleagues to see things our way, just as we should not vote on it. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, just before you leave, there was a question earlier about the vote in District Ten on this. Do you have that available?
The vote, when the resolution was originally adopted in January, was fifteen in favor, none opposed, and six absent from the meeting, the January meeting.
Okay, and there have been no subsequent votes?
We have had subsequent votes on these amendments, yes, and I believe the district leader has them.
Okay, thank you.
The vote, the vote was eighteen in favor, none opposed, three members absent.
All right. The vote was eighteen in favor, none opposed, three were absent. Thank you very much. Further discussion on the Legislative and Rules motion to amend item nineteen. Mr. Bazalovsky, District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, I rise in support of the proposed amendment by the Legislative and Rules Committee, because I think one should take into account the different function that we're talking about here. That is, we as a legislative body, one of the primary things that we are required to do, apart from oversight, is also to inform ourselves about potential matters that come before us. The issue here, I think, is a difficult one, because there is a fine line between what is a quote "influence" and what is a quote "informing." One could take the position, informing, by the way, under District Ten is permitted. One could take easily the position that any time you inform anybody, you are seeking to influence them. I think that the important thing to preserve here is the ability for us to be fully informed. And I'm worried that when you strike, or when you see, when you try to stop people from informing people on the basis that you're accusing them of trying to influence the deliberations of a committee or this body, I think the imprecision of that can create problems, because where that, I think, leads to is a flat prohibition, and you would then have the problem of not getting sufficient information. Remember, the whole thrust, the thrust of this, and with which I completely agree, is full disclosure. And I don't think anybody argues with that point. Once full disclosure is made, however, I think that under those circumstances, somebody should be in a position to go ahead and relay whatever information is in that person's possession and actually vote. This is not, by the way, uncommon, for example, in most corporate statutes, Delaware, for example, or Board of Directors, if a director has a conflict of interest, provided that he makes full disclosure to the board, he's permitted to vote on a particular matter. So the safeguard is the full disclosure aspect. Obviously, if somebody has not disclosed a conflict of interest, then that's a whole different kettle of fish, and under those circumstances, censure should be appropriate. But I think that we are sufficiently knowledgeable to be able to make our own judgments, and to be able to judge what a person who has disclosed a conflict of interest, what the probity of what he's saying, and what weight to be accorded to that person. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make another, when it's appropriate, another amendment to the proposed language, because I think there's another imprecision which hasn't been discussed.
Now, I got your earlier note, that's on Item 20?
Oh, it's actually on both.
On both, okay, we'll do it. Mr. Bazalovsky, could I see you for a minute? Mr. Curtis, speaking on the proposed motion to amend Item 19.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just rise in support of the Legislative and Rules amendment for one very simple reason. Who is it to judge what is information and what is influence? Who makes that call? As it turns out, it should be the other members of that committee who are listening to the discussion. It doesn't need to be written down. If you can, if you are sitting on a committee, you have that ability to determine, as Mr. Bazalovsky said, through open disclosure, you know what, you know the context, you know how that speaker is speaking, you know in what context he is speaking, because he has disclosed it. It should be left up to the other committee members to decide whether it's information or influence, and I have no, I don't see any reason to restrict that. We are legislators, let us do our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beckwith, District Eight.
I wasn't intending to get up here and talk this evening, but something I heard just struck me as, as, as just not right, which is that certain speech should be restricted. And if there's anything that the RTM stands for, it seems to me it's open speech. If there's a substantial conflict, I think we all agree that it ought to be disclosed. But RTM, whether it be the RTM full body, or the individual districts, is all about hearing the, hearing everybody's word. We ought not to restrict an RTM member or a committee member's right to speak, once the disclosure has been made, to somebody that's below, that, somebody from the general public. So if there's a substantial conflict, it ought to be disclosed, he ought not to be able to vote, he or she ought not to be able to vote. But it seems to me that restricting somebody from not speaking is, is not only not right, it's not constitutional, and it, and it reduces the available information from the body. So I'm in favor of, arising in support, obviously, of the amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Van Keiseling, District Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. There are few people probably that have been embroiled in the Board of Ethics business, as I and a couple of others in this audience have been over the number of years. I will report to you that I think our Board of Ethics is becoming healthier and healthier as it goes along, and I've been very pleased to see how well it's growing in its handling of this. I will tell you that the decision that was made by the Board of Ethics this July, I believe it was, had problems. While I was glad to see how, at least that they were dealing with it in a reasoned way, first of all, it was an advisory opinion. Understand that advisory opinion is just that, advice. It wasn't regulatory, it wasn't a decision on their part. They said, "These are the things you should look out for, these are the things you should be careful of, these are the procedures we suggest that a wise person would follow if they want to keep clear of the cliff and not fall over." And obviously, that, that fence for the cliff is going to be a little bit back from the edge of the cliff, it's not going to be the edge of the cliff. I will tell you that I have very strong reservations that if a person went against that advisory opinion, such as the gentleman that was in question at the time, if he continued the way he was going, and he was cited in front of the Board of Ethics for a violation, a complaint was brought to him, the Board of Ethics, that a decision which followed the line of the advisory opinion, I think, would fail in court for a number of infirmities on that, because of a lack of understanding in the process. However, having said that, when we talk about the Board of Ethics, they did not say a lot of prohibitions, they said they should not vote, you, it would be best not to vote. And that's fine, it's advice, it's not a law. I think "we keep it simple, stupid" is a wonderful expression. And this is a very torturous effort to try to regulate a problem that really doesn't exist. One of my colleagues said in District Eight, this is simply sunshine, sunshine disinfects. If I, if what I were asked to make a resolution for this, I would simply say, "Under the rules of the RTM, where people, anybody can speak to the RTM, anyone who addresses the RTM in any of its functions shall disclose any personal interest they have in the matter before them, period." Because what I find upsetting is this, while it's not intended, I'm sure, by District Ten, really is almost an insult to the intelligence of the RTM.
Mr. Van Keiseling, we don't cast aspersions, we don't question motivations.
I wasn't, sir.
Let's just address the merits of the item.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is that I have a faith in the RTM, that if they are given the proper information, and that's the basis of democracy, given an educated electorate, you will get good decisions. If the RTM knows all the factors, exposed to anything being hidden, if somebody comes up and say, "I own half interest in this cement company," or whatever, and then they go on and talk about the beauty and the best benefits of cement over asphalt, I'm sure everybody in this room will take that into account, their personal interests versus the benefit of what they're putting forth, and be able to weigh that. I think to try to construct something for the future is not going to work. Keep it simple, simply leave it as it is, use, adopt this amendment, because at least it makes it less troublesome than what we had before. Thank you.
Further discussion on the pending Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend Item 19. Mr. Isaacson, District Five.
Clearly, Mr. Van Keiseling is correct, that the opinion issued by the Board of Ethics in November of 2006 isn't advisory opinion. But it's been alluded to, sort of, but let me, let me quote from it, I have the opinion with me. This is one part. "Further," said employees should limit discussion to the providing of factual information, and should take care not to become involved in an effort to control or manipulate the outcome. That's in one place. And then further, in the last page, "Employee participation in discussion as a member of an RTM committee on matters pertaining to the department that employs the employee is fraught with danger. The moment that the employee is properly shown to have attempted to influence the outcome, and not just to inform the committee, the employee is likely in frank violation of the Code of Ethics. The safer path is to abstain."
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Yes, sir, are you waiting there, on the side? You have the floor.
I just wanted to simply state that I was disturbed by the tone of censorship of speech, and I would often say that in making decisions of this body, the impact on other people, those people may not be able to voice their own position, because it might be a conflict, because it directly impacts them, not us. It's our decisions that are impacting others sometimes, very directly. And I think their voices should be free to come to the podium and should, free to be expressed. I think their honest situation, the impact of our decisions that affect their lives, or their businesses, or their income or circumstances, is something that should be voiced. It could open a window of our understanding of a situation and make better decisions in the future, hearing those voices.
Thank you. Nick Edwards, District Eight.
Nick Edwards, District Eight, Greenwich Department of Social Services for 15 years. I'm a member on the Health and Human Services Committee. Recently, I appeared before the Ethics Committee in February, and basically said that I would be submitting a request for an advisory opinion, because after seven months of all that work, I contended it didn't even relate to me, even though it was all about me. The concern, and I'd like to share this in informing you, don't be influenced by it, but by the state of Connecticut, I'm constrained by law that I cannot vote on my contract, which I learned, nobody had told me that before, so that was a healthy outcome. The second part of it is there's very strict guidelines in the personnel manual for employees about their comportment of their behavior on the RTM. So that is really important. The advisory opinion is that, just an advisory influence or input. And to the credit of the Ethics Board, they were opening, open to reconsider in the future if they had missed something. Just as an example, I'm still trying to figure out how I've influenced my salary when my wages are determined by collective bargaining. I have no input on that through the RTM, because it's done through, there's this massive thing called collective bargaining. But the, somehow the Board of Ethics thinks that, somehow my behavior in the Health and Human Services Committee somehow links to me profiting. So I still am asking them how to explain that, because I'm still waiting for this windfall I'm supposed to receive. I rise in support of free speech, but my bigger concern is, this should go back to Legislative and Rules to sort this out, because it's so confusing. For instance, I find it really interesting that we, on footnote number two for Item 20, "A potential conflict of interest is a substantial conflict of interest which has not yet occurred." Is that clear to you?
Mr. Bootell, District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I want to give you one more example, that's sort of more immediate, not personalized. We had an item that would have been on the call tonight, but was withdrawn vis-à-vis Glenville School. I believe that was offered on behalf of a committee, that there were committee members who voted for it, who reside in the district. And when we heard about, whenever we hear about schools, we immediately hear about property values. So I would suggest to you that whenever we vote on funding on a school, the district in which you reside, where your property values are dependent on whether that school is done, would be a far certain, more clear conflict of interest than what Mr. Edwards went through. We have to be careful. I abstain on one item tonight, because of a potential conflict of interest, as the executive director of TAG, actually would have been two items tonight, whenever we appoint somebody to the Board of Social Services, where our town funding now is, I routinely abstain, lest somebody drag me in front of the Board of Ethics. I'm rising to support this amendment, because one of my concerns, even though it's only in the appendix to the rules, and it is not going into the rules, if we adopt a prohibition on speaking in a committee, and we lay out the laundry list of who you have to inform, your district, your first, your district chair, the committee chair, my concern is that we may have committee chairman who take it upon themselves to enforce this, even though it's not a rule. It's in the appendix, it is not a rule, but we may have committee chairman who, in their opinion, feel that a member has a conflict of interest, and therefore, I will, I have the right not to recognize him to speak. Because we adopted something tonight that says, if you have a potential conflict of interest, you should not speak to the item. I think we're going down a far more dangerous road of dragging each other in front of the Board of Ethics, unless we adopt this amendment. Let's look for the best in each other, not the worst, and I urge you to support the amendment and strike the prohibition. Let's just get it all out, all right? Thank you.
Janet Lockton, District Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and members. I think it's really important that we understand that in order to have a conflict of interest, it's directly tied to financial gain. And that financial gain is not people that own property that belong to a school, it's that you, as an individual, have a financial gain that nobody else in the room would have, in the body would have, as an individual. So we're not talking about free speech and the right to stand up, we are talking about somebody who directly will gain financially from something that is before the committee or before the RTM. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend Item 19. All right. Mr. Diddakis.
Mr. Moderator, speaking as individual tonight, I did vote against this item in the Legislative and Rules Committee. And I've heard repeated several times in the debate here that we are putting this prohibition on debate in for the very first time, or at least that's the impression I've gotten from listening to the debate, and that really is not the case. The wording in the appendix to the rules has always said, "If you have a conflict, you cannot advocate for that." And that was the reason I voted against this in the Legislative and Rules Committee, because I felt if it had been in the appendix for a very long time, I have no idea how long, maybe since the beginning, and it served well during that period of time, that it certainly could serve well going into the future as well. Thank you.
Mr. Brogan, District Two. The motion for the previous question has been moved and seconded. The motion for the previous question is a motion to cut off debate. It is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. You see, there may be other speakers interested in addressing the pending motion to amend. If you want to allow further discussion, you should vote against the motion for the previous question. If you want to immediately proceed to vote on the motion to amend, you should vote in favor. All those in favor of Mr. Brogan's motion for the previous question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion is carried. This being a substantive matter, I will call for a record vote. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend Item 19. And please quickly proceed to poll your delegation. We will need to know the results of this vote before we can take a final vote. However, because the final vote is combined with Item 20, we can continue our discussion on what is currently before us. So, we are voting on the motion to amend Item 19. Mr. Bazalovsky, before I call on you, I'm going to call on Mr. Diddakis to present what I understand to be the second motion to amend offered by the Legislative Rules on these combined items, particularly on Item 20.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. On Item 20, repeating what I've said in my original comments, the Legislative and Rules Committee moved to amend what, under the substitute resolution you received, is Paragraph B3. And our proposal is to eliminate the last phrase in that Paragraph B3, which begins with the words "in light of which."
All right. That, again, is a motion offered on behalf of one of our committees, so does not require a second, and that motion to amend is currently before us. This would delete that final phrase in Section B3, which reads in its entirety, the phrase that would come out, says, "In light of which the district may wish, but is not obliged to reconsider its vote on the members' committee assignment." Discussion on that motion to amend. Mr. Richardson, District Ten.
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the district, we've considered this recommendation by the Legislative and Rules Committee. We concur with it. We think that in the circumstances, the explanation of the details of a provision of- of Robert’s Rules of Order mitigates against approving the item the way it’s been submitted and that the resolution makes sense, the amendment makes sense. So we would recommend its adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend item twenty. No further discussion on that? Okay. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend item twenty, and proceed to poll your delegation. All right, let’s see if we can totally overwhelm our clerks tonight. Mr. Bazilevsky.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, I’m rising, unfortunately, to propose another amendment. I know. But the fact of the matter is, what you’re dealing with here are some really significant concepts which have, particularly if one member is correct in saying that at some point in time we may decide to, quote, “add teeth” to this, may have some significant consequences. Accordingly, I think the hallmark of good legislative drafting is some measure of precision. It has been stated that, in fact, conflicts of interest in this proposal come from, or the definition thereof, which are located in the footnotes, footnote one and two, come from the state statute. However, there is a third type of conflict of interest that is not located in the state statute. If you look in the sections, and this is both in nineteen and twenty, the litany is substantial conflict of interest, potential conflict of interest, or the possibility thereof. Now, what does that mean? What exactly does it mean, the possibility thereof? I queried District 10 at our meeting on Monday morning, Monday evening, about what that meant, and the intent, I believe, and Mr. Richardson can correct me if I’m wrong, was what the district was trying to reach was the appearance of a conflict of interest. Now, they don’t use that term. I had actually suggested that that term be used in lieu of possibility because appearance of a conflict of interest has some legal significance in the context, for example, of judicial ethics. I mean, if one has an appearance of a conflict, one’s supposed to recuse yourself as a judge. Here, the language is possibility, and in fact, there is no definition. Further, I would ask you, under those circumstances, what’s the difference between a potential conflict of interest, which is defined to be a conflict of interest that has not yet occurred but presumably could occur, and the possibility thereof?
Mr. Bazilevsky. I would just ask our members to please accord the speaker the respect that all speakers deserve. If there’s a need for conversation, please take it outside.
So, in any case, to cut to the quick here, to the chase, here’s the amendment that I would propose, okay? The position I’m advocating is that one should delete the words “or” possibility thereof because the concept is subsumed under the term potential conflict of interest. Accordingly, what you would have is in nineteen D, in the black-lettered, bold-faced, it would appear as substantial conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest, period, and you would delete “or” possibility thereof. In twenty B, you would put an “or,” again, in the first black line, this is in the substitute resolution, so it would read “a substantial conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest,” and you would delete the words, the word apparent in that sentence, which comes at the end, next to the last, the penultimate word in that sentence. So it would be affiliation which gives rise to “the” conflict, and again, in the next sentence, “the” conflict. And you would add, because this is an absence, and it depends upon where you come out on the substitute resolution that was proposed, but if you look on, again, in twenty D three, again, in the bold-faced language, you will see “conflict of interest which has been misconstrued as a substantial,” but they left out the words “potential.” So if you want to be consistent, you would have to add “has been misconstrued as a substantial or potential conflict of interest.” But the guts of what I’m proposing is, the word possibility is extremely subjective. It doesn’t lend itself to any kind of objective standards, and particularly since one has the term already “potential conflict of interest.” If, in fact, the intent was to create a, quote, “appearance of a conflict,” and by the way, one prior member came up and made the forceful presentation that what we’re talking about are direct monetary gains, which are pretty specific, here we have something which is really quite unspecific. And I always worry about any legislation which could conceivably have teeth in it with direct consequences to people where there’s any degree of imprecision. We really ought to try to be as precise as we possibly can, particularly when we’re using defined terms like we are here. Again, just to remind you, possible conflict of interest is not defined in the state statute, and this is supposed to track the state statute. Now, of course, there’s nothing to prevent us from being more strict than what the state allows, but I think under the circumstances, I would argue that that’s not a wise policy. Thank you.
Hold on one minute. So your motion to amend is to do the following, and just tell me if this is correct. In item nineteen, section D, fifth line from the bottom, which ends “any substantial conflict of interest,” you would take out the comma, insert “or,” put a period after the word “interest,” which has footnote three, and delete “or” possibility thereof.
Correct. That’s the first one.
Okay. The next proposed change is to item twenty, section B one. In the second line of the bold, which we all have, where it says, starts off substantial conflict of interest, you would, again, delete the comma, insert the word “or,” and then delete, I believe, is that another comma, after the conflict of interest, which has footnote two, and delete “or” possibility thereof.
Correct.
And one, two, three lines down, delete the word “apparent”
Correct.
In front of conflict, and two lines below that, again, delete the word “apparent.”
Correct.
Okay? And finally, in B three, now I take it at the last bold portion of, this is B three, you are not suggesting any change where it says “the possibility of a conflict of interest.” That wording would remain in your motion, but you would later in that line, which says “has been misconstrued as a substantial,” you would add “or” potential.
Correct.
Okay? So I have that correct?
Yeah.
All right. And that is a motion to amend items nineteen and twenty offered by Mr. Bazilevsky. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to make the amendments just described. Discussion on Mr. Bazilevsky’s motion to amend. Mr. Richardson, District 10.
Well, I think Mr. Bazilevsky is seeing problems where they really don’t exist. The purpose of putting the words “possibility” in was to bring, highlight this for everybody’s attention so that they think about their own circumstances. There is no definition in the statute of possible conflict of interest. There is no penalty in the statute for possible conflict of interest. There is no suggestion in what we’re proposing that there is any penalty for a possible conflict of interest. It’s a highlighter, and the reason for having it is to get your attention. The term “possible” is used elsewhere, Mr. Bazilevsky, in order precisely to-
Mr. Richardson, Mr. Richardson. Our rules prohibit, our rules prohibit addressing members directly. All comments should be made through the chair.
Mr. Moderator, the reason for using the term “possible” elsewhere in the comparison in the example is to point out that you can have an error in somebody misunderstanding the appearance of a conflict for what is a substantial conflict of interest or vice versa, and that what we’re really dealing with here is the substantial conflict of interest. So I think that, I think we can stand with what we’ve suggested to you. We think the thing goes together as an integral whole, and when you start saying, well, this use of the word “possible” makes it, but another use of the word “possible” doesn’t, it just gets to be a bit confusing. I yield to my colleague, Mr. Moderator, if that’s in order.
No. Further discussion on Mr. Bazilevsky’s motion to amend items nineteen and twenty. Mr. Detchin, District 20.
What did I say? I’m thinking of getting the vote on item twenty.
I think there’s been a misunderstanding about the purpose of possibility here. It does not mean apparent. If you, in fact, look at the two places where it pops up, both in nineteen and in twenty, it’s in the context of a member going to his district chairman and advising the chairman that there is the possibility of a substantial conflict or potential conflict. The idea here that we’re trying to introduce is that instead of having crises at every meeting of a particular committee, the various districts, when they go to elect the members of their district who will be, in fact, their representative in these various committees, that they consider the appropriateness of any one member of that district to be the district’s representative in that committee. And if there is the possibility that on a regular basis substantial conflicts of interest are going to arise, or potential conflicts of interest are going to arise, they should then be considering whether that’s the appropriate person to be appointed to that committee. And if you look in the context of where it shows up in nineteen and twenty, that’s what we’re talking about here, is trying to get the district chairman and the districts to think about the possibility of these issues arising. As Mr. Richardson pointed out, there are no penalties, there is no specific regulation or prohibition of the concept of possibility of potential conflict. It’s a matter of urging the districts to recognize that with certain members of the district, the likelihood of these conflicts of interest and potential conflicts arising are going to be more frequent than if someone else within the committee. Our feeling is that the way to reduce the number of conflict problems is in the selection process at the start of each term rather than on a case-by-case basis when we have a particular member, for example, who may be consistently confronted with these conflict issues within a particular committee.
Thank you. Before I recognize anyone further, let me just read the votes on the first two amendments that we have taken on this. It may give a flavor of where we are and whether we need to beat this further. On the first Legislative and Rules proposed amendment, this dealt with item nineteen only. Those in favor, one thirty-one; opposed, thirty-eight; abstaining, four. On the second, and so that motion to amend has carried. On the second motion to amend, item twenty, offered by Legislative and Rules, those in favor, one fifty-seven; opposed, seven; abstaining, four. That amendment has carried. Mr. Bazilevsky?
I don’t want to belabor the point, but one thing, but one thing you have to understand in response to the right honorable colleague who just spoke, what I’m concerned about is not, I completely agree with the thrust of this whole thing at the outset, what I’m concerned about is all of us who may not know that we have a possible conflict of interest and fail to apprise our chairman, and in hindsight, somebody is going to point the finger and say, “You had a possible conflict,” where there is no definition of what constitutes a possible conflict. Obviously, I’m completely in agreement with the notion that we are all obligated to inform our chairman, the world for that matter, about any particular direct financial interests we may have in a given matter, for that matter, any interest. I go further than just financial interest. Where I part company is where you start to define what that potential or substantial conflict of interest is. We have a state statute, we have a definition, but we have added something in here about saying that we have to inform not only about a substantial, not only about a potential, but/or a possible. And the question I pose to you, as all of the individuals here who might be faced with this subject, what if you failed to do that because you never knew you had a possible conflict? Because there’s no definition.
Thank you. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Bazilevsky motion to amend items nineteen and twenty, and proceed to poll your delegation. We will need the result of this before taking a final vote. So why don’t we, at this point, if you’d like to stand and stretch your legs, we’ll take a two-minute break. Let’s get that vote in quickly, please. All right, I ask the members to please take their seats, and we will continue. I have the results of the vote on Mr. Bazilevsky’s motion to amend items nineteen and twenty. Those in favor, eighty-nine; opposed, seventy-four; abstaining, two. That motion to amend has carried. So we now have an amended item nineteen and an amended item twenty before us. Further discussion on items nineteen and twenty. Mr. Von Kaiserling, District 8.
Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, thank you again for your indulgence. I want to make something clear as far as I can read this document before us, and so the RTM is very clear in its understanding, and if I’m incorrect in any portion of this, I hope that I will be corrected so that we have complete understanding. The RTM’s action that’s being taken tonight, if it passes this item, people should understand is purely advisory, it has no power of law. It is an amendment to the appendix of the rules of the RTM. It’s not an amendment to the rules of the RTM and therefore stands aside from the rules. Where the rules are part of the town code and therefore a law, the appendix is not. We have to understand, therefore, that the only thing that governs us, when this is all sudden done outside of the good wisdom and guidance of our fellow members, is the Code of Ethics, which is part of the Code of Greenwich and is a law, and that prohibition only says that if you have a substantial financial interest, you should dissuade from voting, abstain from voting. That substantial financial interest has never been clearly defined in town in my history and experience in the RTM over some twenty-odd years. I have seen substantial financial interests, I should say, I have seen financial interests as high as $25,000 in a development project which was considered not substantial. I have seen $100 in other cases considered substantial. I, to this day, do not know what the definition of substantial financial interest in this town is, and it has not been clearly defined. So there’s not much comfort there either. It says, by the way, another very important point, which goes to a confusion I think a lot of us have, and this is one of the weaknesses of the Board of Ethics ruling on the Edwards case. It says, “if you have a substantial financial interest except where that interest is held in common with others.” So if other groups of people have that, even though you’re a minority, have the same interest as you do, even if it’s financial, then you are advocating, and that is where we call democracy, that is called a debate, that is called representative town government. And therefore, where it’s held in common, you may even have a substantial interest, and you still may participate and vote. And that’s a phrase that nobody has ever mentioned in all of our debates on conflict of interest. And if you understand that in the Appointments Committee, we have been seriously concerned with this issue of conflict of interest for at least fifteen years. And before that, when I was on the Planning and Zoning Committee before Kingland Use, also in conflict-
also in conflict of interest, people fail to understand that where it's held in common, it is not a substantial financial interest, as District Eleven, District Ten is looking at it. So basically speaking, all that we're talking about today is lovely thinking and lovely guidance, and getting some sort of commonality in our thinking, and I think we can all agree that the best thing is for everybody to disclose all of their interests, financial otherwise, if they have a sister, brother, aunt, if they belong to the same club, if they're trying to get the presidency of that club, and it's involved, and you say, the land trust, or something of that nature, which is an excellent group. But if there's something which divides one's interest from the sworn duty, as you and I, as a town officer, anything which divides our interest should be declared so that people can put it in the proper context. Thank you.
All right, further discussion on items nineteen and twenty. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? I'm sorry. Joan Caldwell, you want it to be recognized? Joan Caldwell, Chair of District Ten.
It's been a long process, and the only purpose in this process, from the viewpoint of the members of District Ten, was to encourage all of the members of Town Meeting to do the one thing that we are really capable of doing, and which we find so abysmally absent at the state and federal level, and that is self-police ourselves. We write our own rules, and we work with and within those rules. And we simply wanted to give an advisory to the RTM. That's why we didn't put it in a rule, we put it in the appendix, that there is a substantial conflict of interest that from time to time, many of us run into. I've run into it, and I, for many years, was forced to recuse myself on many issues, because I didn't want my name, or my reputation, or this body damaged because I voted. And we're asking that you use the same degree of common sense. You have it, you know where it exists. There is nothing else that the District Ten wanted to achieve. The language we worked out, we worked out with the town attorney, paralleling and parroting the state statute. It has been cut and torn and shredded, to the point where I'm not sure that the intent of this advisory is as strong as it should be. When the Board of Ethics met, they were very, very clear, in their minds, that there is a difference between just discussion and information providing and influencing. They were very clear that one's right to speak on the floor of the Town Meeting is open to everyone, but that when you're one of twelve people that vote on an item and influence the full body, you have far greater power and ability than you do when you're in with full two-hundred-and-thirty. They were very well aware that they could not write rules for us and shouldn't, and they said, we would like the RTM to police itself. We tried, we put it in front of you. Now it's up to you to figure out what to do with it.
Further discussion on items nineteen and twenty. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Items nineteen and twenty is amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. All right, we have two items remaining, items twenty-one and twenty-two. Dean Goss, District One.
I'd like to propose that we suspend the rules and take up item twenty-two first.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules in order to take item twenty-two before item twenty-one. Item twenty-two being a proposed scheduled change for our April meeting. The, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. If you want to immediately take up item twenty-two now, you should vote in favor of this motion. If you want to proceed first with item twenty-one and then see everyone leave, you should vote no. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion has carried. Item twenty-two now comes before us. Mr. Dadas with that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a resolution presented by the Legislative and Rules Committee to move the April RTM meeting to Monday, April sixteenth.
Thank you. As this is offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Mr. Dadas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this resolution is what I call members' choice. You get to make a decision tonight that affects you directly, and I don't think you have to worry about a conflict of interest. What we've offered here tonight is an option to move the April meeting to April sixteenth. As the schedule now stands, the April meeting is April ninth, which is the day after Easter, which means that the committee meetings will be held the week before that, some of which may conflict, will conflict with Passover, and some of which may conflict with Holy Thursday. But of course, nothing as simple as we saw with the last items. If we move the meeting to April sixteenth, it will then be held during the week of school vacation. So there are pros and there are cons. Hence, we brought this item before you, we did not take a position on it, asking you to vote what you wanted to do.
Mr. Dadas, I would signal if you could just push that away or step back a little bit.
Okay. So you can just decide what you want to do, and we'll go from there. Thanks.
Thank you. Discussion on, on item twenty-two. I will say, I was informed that our master of Channel Seventy-Nine here would not be present on April sixteenth, as he has plans to be away on that vacation, so. Further discussion on item twenty-two. All right, I will call for a voice vote on this. All those, so if you want to adopt the new date, then you should vote in favor. If you want to leave the April meeting on the currently scheduled date of April ninth, you should vote no. All those in favor of changing the April date to April sixteenth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That, that resolution has failed. So our April meeting remains as originally scheduled for April ninth. Item twenty-one now comes before us. Suzanne Geis-Robins of District Two.
Mr. Moderator, the proposed sense of the meeting resolution is as it appears in the call. It's very strange. There will be a motion to offer a substitute resolution, which will respond to most of the issues raised during the committee and district meetings. At the conclusion of the committee reports, I would like to speak on the substitute resolution.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item twenty-one has been moved and seconded. We will begin with our Budget Overview Committee report. Randall Huffman, Chair of the Budget Overview Committee.
The Budget Overview Committee did not have this item assigned, but at our meeting on March the sixth, we decided to take the matter up. Item twenty-one, as originally prepared, is a well-intended effort to bring planning into the process of the development of a number of proposed activities, particularly in the Central Business District, and to take account of the effort that is currently moving toward fruition of revising the plan of conservation and development. But as we looked at the terms of the amendment, of the proposal, as it came from the petition, several of us felt that there could be substantial concern that it would be effectively a dead halt to a lot of potential planning and a lot of potential projects, which might be delayed for a significant period of time while we were undergoing the revision of the plan of conservation and development. As we reached the vote in the BOC, I suggested that while I favored the concept set forth in the petition, I felt there was a mandatory language that we should look at, and that I would undertake to devise an amendment. And based on that, the vote of the BOC at that time was three in favor of the original language, four opposed, and one abstaining. Accordingly, I have drafted an amendment, I think most of you have seen it, perhaps first in an earlier rendition, but secondarily today in its revised form, and I will offer that as an individual, following whatever committee reports there are on the original language. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go first? Pam Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, ladies and gentlemen, this item was presented by Suzanne Geis-Robins, the petitioner, and Vince DiMarco, representing the Central Business District Consensus Group. This calls for comprehensive planning and significant public input, and for full disclosure of plans. This item, this should be the goal of all parties and constituencies to improve town planning. In particular, the resolution calls for moratorium on Central Business District planning improvements and appropriations until the plan of conservation and development can be developed. This will take into consideration several projects, including the Board of Ed move, potential impact on the senior center, town green enhancements, parking, and the proposed art center. None of these should be done, excuse me, that's the charter, none of these should be done without full consideration and assessment of all costs, benefits, impact, and risk. The town charter in Section Ninety-Two specifies that the plan shall be based on studies of physical, social, economic, and governmental conditions and trends, and shall be designed to promote the development of the town and the general welfare and prosperity of its people. Fairly loose language, but all can agree that it is a sound objective. Our guest also included Betsy Mulcar, hopefully I got that right, Treasurer for the Art Center and other representatives. She expressed concern that their project is, is, is in its third year of planning, and this since the meeting resolution would cause further costly delays, that they are currently awaiting a Board of Ed decision on vacating the Havemeyer Building. They are seeking a commitment ultimately from the town to lease the building, given a concern that perhaps ten million of the thirty million that they need to raise from donors could be lost. This commitment is being sought even though it is unclear where, or when, or if the Board of Ed will go, or at what cost to the town. And we understand that now the senior center has even been brought into this consideration for a move to accommodate the art center. As expressed to the art center representatives, it is important to reiterate here that this item is not a vote for or against the art center. Rather, this item is focused on a more coordinated approach to town planning. No one project, a person, or group's interest should take precedence over prudent planning and the financial interest of the town. However, the committee felt that the intent and the use of the plan of conservation and development, particularly as it relates to the capital plan items, was adequately addressed by the RTM in the fall, in October, when we voted on a two-to-one basis in support of a similar item to improve this process. The P O C D as currently used is a planning document. The town charter provides little direction on its use in the approval process for capital projects. As such, the committee's vote is reflective of the inability of the resolution to be implemented through the P O C D process, and the fact that there would be a significant delay that this moratorium could cause, given the P O C D will not be ready until the fall of two thousand and eight, two full budget cycles. The committee's vote of zero, eleven, zero expresses our belief that while the spirit of this resolution is correct, that a better coordinated planning, and it's that of planning really, the selectmen, the B E T, and the RTM should work together toward improving the C I P process, including how the C I B, C I P should best work in conjunction with and taking into consideration the plan of conservation and development. Based on the October RTM resolution, it was intended that the RTM would begin this process through the work of the moderators committee, that will explore how to fix the C I P planning process. I will give my, my own comments later. Again, the vote of the committee was eleven, zero, eleven, zero, with District Four absent.
Thank you. Franklin Blumer with the Land Use Committee report.
The Land Use Committee considered this item at our meeting last Monday evening. It was presented to us on behalf of the petitioners by Suzanne Geis-Robins and Vince DiMarco. We also had a delegation from the Board of the Greenwich Center for the Arts, which included Fifi Sheridan, Murray Corson, Bee Crumbine, and, and others. The resolution calls for a delay in the implementation of capital projects in the Central Business District until a plan for the Central Business District has been prepared, a comprehensive plan. Since planning and zoning is getting organized to prepare its new plan of conservation and development at the present time, the resolution anticipates that planning for the Central Business District would be part of the effort to prepare the new P O C D. It is expected that the new P O C D will be completed and voted on by the RTM by the end of two thousand and eight. In other words, by the end of next year. There are a number of issues that need to be addressed in the Central Business District. They include, of course, the move of the Board of Education from the Havemeyer Building, assuming they move. We don't yet have a final decision on where they are going to move, but the, their desire is to move. There is the proposed conversion of the Havemeyer Building to an art center. This is a project that has a lot of support, but it is not yet a done deal. One of the proposals in respect of the move of the Board of Education is that it go to the senior center, which is directly across the street from the Havemeyer Building. The seniors would then move to a new building to be constructed next to the existing town hall, the new town hall. The proposed development, another project is the proposed development of a town green, which would extend from the new safety, public safety complex to town hall along the north side of the Havemeyer Building. There, there is the beautification of Greenwich Avenue, a project which, together with the town green, those two projects, the proposed improvements to Greenwich Avenue, improved uniform sidewalks, new street furniture, revised crosswalks. The, the improvements to Greenwich Avenue and the town green are projects which are anticipated to cost seven and a half million dollars over a five-year period. There's also the proposed installation of traffic lights on Greenwich Avenue, and the possible elimination of police from directing traffic on the avenue. And finally, there are still outstanding two studies that were done several years ago, one on traffic circulation in the Central Business District, the other on parking in the Central Business District, neither of which have been fully implemented. In other words, there's a lot of things to look at in the, in the Central Business District, and the proposal is that these be looked at in a coordinated and comprehensive way. Some of the proposals that have been put forward have, have been put forward without extensive public input. In particular, the proposal to move the seniors from the existing senior center on Greenwich Avenue to a site away from Greenwich Avenue has not been favorably received by the seniors. At the same time, many have questioned why the Board of Education needs to remain on Greenwich Avenue. Both these proposals are driven to some extent by the desire to make the Havemeyer Building available to the supporters of the proposed Center for the Arts. We were informed by the proponents of the Center for the Arts that a lease of the Havemeyer Building to the Art Center group would come before us in September. The lease is needed in order for the Art Center to raise approximately thirty million dollars that it needs to convert the building. They presently have commitments, I understand, for ten million, this is what we were told, they have commitments for ten million, but they need to raise another twenty million, and they need to have the lease in place in order to raise that money. But what that means is that when the lease comes before us, the Art Center will not have the funds that it needs to convert the building. So the lease will presumably be conditioned in some way on the building, the successful fundraising effort. In other words, we will not know whether the Center, the Art Center project will go forward until these two steps have been accomplished, approval of the lease by this body, and success in raising the necessary funds. The Board of the Greenwich Center for the Arts, who were present at our meeting, did not take a position on the, on the petition at our meeting, but they not take a position on the petition at our meeting, but they explained how they believe that their proposal complements recommendations in the 1998 Plan of Conservation and Development, in other words, the existing one, how the proposed center would take the considerable expense of renovating the Havemeyer Building out of the town budget, and how the center would serve as an anchor for various of the improvements to the Central Business District that have been proposed and would be implemented in the next several years. The proponents of the resolution made it clear that they support the Art Center project, and members of the Land Use Committee expressed the same view. The concern the resolution addresses is that capital projects appear to be proceeding before uncertainties about the Art Center project have been resolved, that these projects have been put forward without the appropriate citizen input that should be there, and finally, that we really need a comprehensive plan in addressing the full range of needs of the Central Business District before we proceed. The vote in the Land Use Committee was 10 in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, District 6 absent. The negative vote, which was Mike Aurelia from District 3, opposes putting capital projects in the Plan of Conservation and Development.
Thank you. Let me just announce the results of the vote on Items 19 and 20, the proposed change to our appendix by District 10. Those in favor, 138; opposed, 22; abstaining, 3. Those two items have carried. Mr. Diddakis with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee on Item 21.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Members of the town meeting, the Legislative and Rules Committee met to discuss this item, which essentially is trying to pick up a lot of the capital improvement planning process and drop it into the Planning and Zoning Commission under the Plan of Conservation and Development. You've heard most of the details of what this entails already, so I won't repeat that. Needless to say, we, as the other committees, had substantial discussion with many, many visitors, including Suzanne Geis-Robins, who is the proponent of this item, and also members from the Art Center. Our committee discussion surrounded the following points. First of all, it was mentioned that the current capital improvement plan, while certainly not perfect, is better than anything we have ever had before. Up until this point, the P&amp;Z has not taken an active role in this process. The Plan of Conservation and Development is a cumbersome vehicle for something as dynamic as the capital improvement projects. When the Plan of Conservation and Development comes before the RTM, the RTM can only vote yes or no. They cannot amend that plan, and that will decrease a great deal of flexibility. And also, it will be quite some time, possibly as long as two years, before the POCD is updated, and yet this resolution bans all capital projects in the Central Business District except under two limited criteria. As we all know, there's a lot going on in the Business District, and banning everything may not be a good idea. The ban would extend to projects for which may have some sort of time sensitivity, that if we don't act, we could lose funding, and also it would ban projects that would be there to improve public safety. The Legislative and Rules Committee voted on this, 12 in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, to tell you that it is in legal order, because all sense of the meeting resolutions brought forward by voters are. And on the merits of the item, we voted zero in favor, 10 opposed, with two abstentions, the abstentions being that they wanted more information. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Vince DiMarco, Chair of our Transportation Committee.
The Transportation Committee also took this item up. Suzanne Geis-Robins presented. She's an alternate member of the Transportation Committee. She made the case for appropriate comprehensive planning prior to implementing individual capital projects, the need for obtaining widespread citizen input in the planning process, and the benefits to the town budget and taxes to be derived from proper planning. She reviewed the legal importance of the Plan of Conservation and Development in upholding the decisions of the P&amp;Z Commission. She questioned the domino effect, that you've heard already, of moving the Board of Education into the Senior Center Building, moving the Senior Center off the Avenue, converting the Havemeyer Building into an Art Center while displacing people, eliminating adjacent parking, and affecting traffic patterns, and more. She suggested instead accelerating the preparation of a comprehensive plan for the Central Business District reflecting widespread citizen input before funding new capital projects in the Central Business Districts, which plan should be adopted by the RTM as an amendment to the POCD. Discussion followed. The current POCD specifically calls for no traffic lights on Greenwich Avenue, and it also acknowledges the presence of the Senior Center in the Central Business District. Most members favored the concept of the Art Center and don't want to discourage the volunteers who are promoting it, but feel many issues created by these changes need to be considered before proceeding with the implementation. The committee voted on the Item 900, with Districts 4, 10, and 12 absent.
Thank you. Ms. Geis-Robins, do I understand it is your preference that I recognize Mr. Huffman, or, okay, Randall Huffman in his individual capacity?
I hope all of you have received a copy of a piece of paper that's headed Second Proposed Amendment to Item 21. If there's anyone who has not had a chance to look at this language, which is somewhat similar to that that was circulated widely over the weekend, there are extra copies of it here or available from some of the district chairs. I move the following amendment to this item. In place of all the language that appears in the item after the following words in the resolved clause, resolved that it is the sense of the representative town meeting, everything else then is stricken to be replaced by the following language. Development of a comprehensive plan for the Central Business District by adoption by the RTM as a part of the Plan of Conservation and Development, which would include a boundary description of the Central Business District and which reflects the interests and concerns expressed by the citizens of Greenwich and all affected stakeholders and community groups, shall be given the highest priority by the town. And, two, no final project approval or appropriation of public funds for any town capital project within the Central Business District, not within the scope of any previous approval or appropriation, shall be given or made until, A, such comprehensive plan for the Central Business District has been so adopted by the RTM as such plan may be revised and updated from time to time, or B, upon a showing of extraordinary circumstances, such capital project has received specific approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the representative town meeting. I would like later to address why I have proposed the language in the amendment.
All right, let's get this before us. Is there a second?
Okay.
All right, and everyone has a copy of this? Okay. It has been moved and seconded to amend Item 21 as just described, so that is now before us. Discussion on this motion to amend. Ms. Geis-Robins?
Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM, several people asked me to give a little background on myself, and I'll make this very short, but I have been involved as a volunteer in a number of zoning and development issues before the P&amp;Z since I moved here in 1981. I served on the Conservation Commission for eight years and was vice chairman and then chairman of the Commission for about six of those years. I was on the first two Cosco Power Plant Planning Committees, and also served on the committee and helped write the Grass Island Master Plan, which was then adopted by the RTM as part of the Plan of Conservation and Development. So when I had the opportunity to take the lead to bring this proposal to the RTM, I was happy to do it because I believe in what it is trying to accomplish. I would like to reiterate that at no time has this resolution been intended to be an expression of opinion, one way or the other, for or against any pending capital project whatsoever, and this has never been the intention for, to my knowledge, of the people who signed the petition. The resolution simply calls for the town to do exactly what today is required to be done under state statutes and our Town Charter. That's all we are asking for. The petition and the resolution simply asks that the RTM acknowledge and reinforce that. The town is required to, by law, to do long-term comprehensive planning for the entire town and to prepare a POCD. They have no choice. Number two, do this by soliciting widespread citizen input so that the resulting document, the POCD, will reflect the wishes and the needs of the citizens of Greenwich. Stated differently, the POCD is the voice of the people. The citizens of the town are the decision-makers. A few brief points that I made in some of the meetings, but I'll make them very short. Once the RTM adopts the POCD, the POCD becomes a legal document. It governs, and the Planning and Zoning Commission's decisions are required to be consistent with the POCD. Number two, under the law, comprehensive planning is required to be done only by the Planning and Zoning Commission and not by any other town department. The POCD can be prepared only by the Planning and Zoning Commission and must be adopted by the RTM in order to go into effect. What the other town departments have been doing is planning only for individual, specific projects, not the overall planning that we are requesting in this resolution. Number three, comprehensive planning is required, A, so the town can avoid the significant costs resulting from the unintended consequences of a project or a series of projects, which by their domino effect create serious problems affecting existing uses, structures, and facilities. And B, so when the project is completed, town citizens will be comfortable and satisfied that the project will comply with their wishes and become what they have agreed they want to see developed in their town. The Public Safety Complex is the first domino to fall. There are more to come, has been described to you, and they will all fall within the same two-to-three block area where the other projects are slated to go. Number four, this resolution is limited to the Central Business District because of the costly and numerous capital projects currently proposed, and the extensive disruptions of the people that they will cause. The Senior Center is an example, but planning is essential for all parts of town, some more than others, depending on the pressures they are under and the needs and wishes of these citizens being affected. For example, there is a serious need for comprehensive planning in Byram. District 4 told me last week that Byram has been asking for a comprehensive plan for years, and they have received nothing. Even the current POCD dated in 1998 calls for a plan for Byram. Byram is an area under tremendous pressure. It deserves to get this, and it should be sooner rather than later, and in my view, they have been extraordinarily patient. I want to just make certain you understand that the amendments to the resolution do not require the comprehensive plan to be delayed until the POCD is final. The new resolution that Randall has crafted is a good one, attempts, we hope, to meet most of the objections that we heard during the process, and as a proponent, I agree wholeheartedly with Randall's proposal, and I hope the RTM will also agree and vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Mr. Huffman?
In summary, the purpose of the amendment is to call for the development of a comprehensive plan for the Central Business District, reflecting the participation of all stakeholders, which plan should be pursued expeditiously and be adopted pursuant to the Plan of Conservation and Development as it may be revised and finalized, and requires that no projects in the Central Business District receive final approval or appropriation of public funds until the project has been included in the comprehensive plan unless, upon a showing of extraordinary circumstances, a specific project receives approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the RTM. The intent of the amendment is to require the development of a plan for the Downtown Business District first, with the kind of participation we have not seen in the past from interested parties, and simply to halt the final approval process for projects until we go through the planning process. It is not intended to be a complete halt to the Downtown Central Business District. It is indeed intended to be a way to move forward as quickly as possible, coordinating, planning for a series of projects that will determine the look of this Central Business District for many years to come, and I urge your support. Thank you.
Mr. Malkin, I know you want to speak on this item in general. We are now discussing a motion to amend Item 21. Do you care to speak now, or do you want to wait until we?
I'll wait, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Blumer, speaking on the motion to amend.
I rise to support the amendment, which I think is an improvement over the resolution that is currently in the call. First, I want to just address a point that was made by both of the committees that opposed this item, namely that we'll delay projects. Planning first and implementing only when planning is complete necessarily slows things down. It's a two-step process. But doing things before, and thus without planning, means proceeding without a clear sense of how what is done fits into the larger picture. Looking as the amendment would have us do at the Central Business District, rather than putting it in the context of the development of the complete POCD, allows it to move on a faster track. That's an advantage. It's advantage number one. It nonetheless retains what is the most important element of the Plan of Conservation and Development, and that is that it is the result of a very visible and very comprehensive public input process. Yes, it's inflexible in the sense that after that effort to ascertain where the public is on the various issues covered by the plan, you don't go out and do that effort right away again. So it is inflexible in that it is a snapshot of where the public is on the issues that it deals with at the time the effort is made. But it can be modified, and the resolution that we adopted in October calls for it to be modified, again, with appropriate citizen input. So the resolution that you have from Randall Huffman preserves the strong emphasis on public input. Nonetheless, he has provided that the CBD plan, the Central Business District plan, would become a part of the Plan of Conservation and Development, and thus would come to us for our approval. Finally, it contains a very important safety valve, which is to say that if there is a project that we really need to move forward with, in extraordinary circumstances, we can do that. It's an improvement. I'm in favor of the adoption of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Vince DiMarco, to be followed by Peter Berg, to be followed by Don Conway.
I can only add one thing, and that actually, in agreement with this amendment, I was very concerned also that we would have to wait until the Plan of Conservation and Development was completed before anything would move forward, so I'm really strongly in favor of this amendment.
All right, Peter Berg, to be followed by Don Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Of course, we have a current Plan of Conservation and Development. It was developed with input from many residents, adopted by the RTM in 1998. That plan sets one great goal for our Central Business District, quote, "to provide the variety and quality of goods and services that residents want." And I emphasize "residents." It tells us to beware of becoming a regional center, and it specifically says not to have traffic lights on Greenwich Avenue, and it's clear that the reason it says that is because it perceives traffic lights to be unfriendly to pedestrians. I would say that, incidentally, I support this resolution. I also support the Arts Center, but I say as long as the Arts Center is for Greenwich residents, and it's not a regional arts center like the one, for example, in Stanford. And I have great respect for the volunteers who are donating their time and their talent for projects like the Arts Center. I know it takes great energy, and when a project involves asking donors for money, it takes great courage. So I salute those volunteers. We're very fortunate to have them, and I would tell them that their plan is more likely to succeed with this resolution. Thank you.
Don Conway, to be followed by Pam Frederick.
Mr. Moderator and fellow RTM, I rise to support the amendment, and I also want to speak on the whole issue. My problem that I have without a plan is the parking situation, and I keep asking myself, where is everyone going to go? If you take the Board of Education and you move it out of their building, there's no parking at the Senior Center, not that I know of. They've got to park somewheres. If you take the Arts Center and put it where it is, those people are going to need parking. If you take the Senior Center and put that behind Greenwich Town Hall, the people that are parking and working in Town Hall are going to need someplace to park, along with the seniors that show up. So where do you go? And if you turn around and you take and beautify Greenwich Avenue and possibly lose a few spots, where are you going to put them? The place that I can see in this town, we've voted more than once against tiered parking, but it strikes me that this is exactly what it's all leading to. If you put the Arts Center and you put the Board of Education, I don't expect these folks to walk that far. I can visualize a tiered parking lot along the Havemeyer Building on the south side of it or the backside of it. It has to be someplace. I can see also tiered parking over in Town Hall possibly, or, as we've talked against many times, Benedict Place, because where are all the other people from Town Hall going to park? The parking garage at Town Hall can handle the rest of them. So I really do ask you all to please pass this sensitive meeting resolution and have the Selectmen and the town and the Planning and Zoning come back to us and tell us at least what is going to happen with our parking situation. Thank you.
One moment. I just want to make it clear. I think what's happening is a little out of the ordinary in terms of our regular procedure. What is currently before us is a motion to amend. However, I think what we're really facing here is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the proponents of this, but I think the vote on this motion to amend essentially is going to be a vote on item 21. If this amendment goes down, I don't foresee us spending any more time on this item, other than perhaps formally to vote item 21 down as it appears on the call. So I just want everyone who is interested in this to keep that in mind. If someone has a sense that I'm wrong on that, you know, I stand to be corrected, but I think we are really getting at the gist of this, and procedurally, if we could have, Ms. Robbins, is it fair to say that you would prefer this be the item before us?
I think it should be.
Yeah, okay. So I don't see a way around it. We would have to take a recorded vote, so I think we'll proceed along that basis. We're really addressing, you know, this is what we are voting on tonight. It's in the form of a motion to amend, you know, and it'll have to stay that way for now, but just please recognize that. Ms. Frederick? So, Mr. Malkin, I think you should, at some point, jump in here. Ms. Frederick?
I'm supporting this item at this point. I support the spirit of the item, which is greater town, greater coordinated town planning. I will limit my comments to highlighting a couple of points in the charter. The charter calls for, and the state statute requires, a plan of development. The plan can be adopted according to section 93 of the town charter by, quote, "successive resolutions." That means that it was intended that the plan of development could evolve to reflect, again as it states, changed conditions. In particular, per section 94, the plan is to address the relocation and improvement of public real property and public buildings, including schools. Why it has not been used in this manner is unclear, but what is increasingly clear is that that is how it should be used going forward. Again, I support this item and hope that the RTM will support it as well. Thanks.
All right, Dean Goss, to be followed by Arlene Lamazo. They gave me your name. Okay? Arlene Lamazo, to be followed by Mary Pellegrino. Well, someone gave me a list with your name on it. All right? So let's go with Arlene Lamazo for now.
I rise to oppose both the resolution and the amendment. I was told that when I saw the amendment, it would change my mind, but it hasn't. It talks about the development of a comprehensive plan, and when I asked who was going to do that, I was told that it would be done by a consultant. And I'm not so sure that the issues that we're talking about for Central Business District can be handled by a single consultant. It appears to me that the Plan of Conservation and Development, which will result in a plan for the future development of the Central Business District, is something that will have a great deal of public input. I know that because I participated in the last one. Everybody in town comes out for it. Everybody gives their opinions. It takes a long time to gather those opinions, and then they write them up, and that's what guides us. But setting the P O C D aside, we're also talking about a plan, a comprehensive plan, to deal with all these constituencies out there that need space somewhere. And of course, we had a very elegant appeal at our district by the Arts Council people who said, "Look, we're in the middle of fundraising, and we don't want the momentum of that to be stalled by this resolution." And they came to speak against this, and I sympathize with their position, because in order to raise the kind of money that they would have to, we can't put this stone wall into the Central Business District and say, "No capital projects may move forward at this time." I mean, and then you say, "Well, it's okay. We'll let some of them go through." Who's going to decide what the sum of them is are? What does it mean to have an extraordinary circumstance? Is public safety an extraordinary circumstance? I went through the budget presentation, and I found two, four, six, eight, nine items that pertain to public safety and then one that dealt with the issues of the dock, the Grass Island docks that have to be. Those are in the CIP. Are we going to stall those? Is that an extraordinary circumstance? So the business of halting the CIP process, which has the effect of things snowballing, because if you don't do it this year, well, maybe you'll do it next year or the year after, and then all that plan in the CIP begins to roll like a snowball and stack up on itself. To me, we're mixing, we're mixing things up, folks, in a way that makes matters worse and not better. I think I'm all in favor of planning, and I think what we really need, and this doesn't address it, the town needs a town planner who will work full-time on planning. We don't have it. We haven't had it. And the new chairman of P and Z, I understand, is wanting to give planning a little more time so that it can get done. All the constituencies out there that need space will have to be handled sort of diplomatically, both with the neighbors and within-town government. It remains to be seen whether the Board of Ed should stay in the center of town. It remains to be seen whether maybe the seniors might eventually be better off in a newer building, in a newer building, if it were to be built, perhaps near Town Hall, that would be one-floor, modern, whereas now they're in an old building that, to me, is kind of cramped, and I don't think is very attractive on the inside. I've seen senior centers that are gorgeous. If you go up to Waverly, you'll see a center that's really gorgeous. We should have, we should be able to do this without tying our hands the way this resolution wants us to do. And I think it's interesting, when Don Conway was talking, I'll try to be brief, Don Conway has considerations for things that he thinks need to be addressed. Parking needs to be addressed. Traffic needs to be addressed. Do we want a deck? Don't we want a deck? Will lights make life safer on Greenwich Avenue? Maybe that's not such a bad idea, even though I hate lights, but, you know, if the idea is to make it safer, well, we need to consider those things. All of us, including Mr. Melick, myself, Vinnie DiMarco, we've talked about these things on various committees, Transportation Committee and others. We all have our visions for what Greenwich, downtown Greenwich, should look like. We're all concerned about how it looks, the aesthetic appeal, the safety, the beauty, and that's what that town green is about. It's about both encouraging movement back and forth in a safe way. It's about aesthetics. It's about beautifying the center of Greenwich. I think we all want that. But this resolution and the way of doing it this way, to me, does not serve that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I would encourage you not to vote for this. I think it is, as others have said, this, it confuses the situation more than it helps. Let me just make a couple of points by way of background. There is a lot of planning which already has been done and which is on the boards to be done over the course of the next two years. Your chairman of your land use committee sits on one of those committees, the committee that's been working with the consultant, doing the work that you funded over the last two years to prepare preliminary plans, preliminary, for the streetscape on Greenwich Avenue and for the treatment of the parkland between Town Hall and the Senior Center. That work needs to be taken now to the next step. It needs to be turned into the kinds of documents that can be presented to Planning and Zoning as part of the MI process, and that MI process can't even get started until that engineering work has been done, and so the money for that is in the budget that you'll have before you in May. That process calls for us to, and this was discussed in the Budget Committee meetings of the BET a few weeks ago, some of you were there and heard these discussions, but that process calls for us to have public hearings before we go to Planning and Zoning, and then all the public processes that are associated with Planning and Zoning. And it requires that this work be coordinated with the work that's being done at the same time by the town planner and the Planning and Zoning Board and the planning staff as part of the P O C D process. We have a P O C D, and most of what we've been talking about over the course of the last two years is entirely consistent with the existing P O C D. But things have changed in the last 10 years, and that's why we are required to update the P O C D, and there's money in the budget this next year to provide a few hundred thousand dollars that can be used by the town planner to hire professional help to assist in the overall preparation of the P O C D. So these pieces all come together. They're not being done in isolation, and it's not fair to characterize them as not having public input. Many of them have had public input in the past, and there's more public input planned aside from the public input which happens in the P O C D process. But this kind of sense of the meeting resolution confuses people. It makes them think that we don't want to continue to move forward, that we want to create entire new processes which don't exist now, and that is going to stall things and make things more difficult. I just want to remind you of a couple of things that have been done in the last few years, so you can see why these processes are difficult. We had money a few years ago to do the Central Business District circulation study. That document exists, and it's being taken into account as we go forward with capital projects. That's one document. The second was the document, actually, two studies that were done on parking in the downtown area, which resulted, after those two studies were done, in the Benedict Place proposal, which you voted down. That has now resulted in us beginning to replan the way we use the surface parking that we have and not to continue to pursue structured parking projects unless they come up out of the P O C D process over the next two years. If that P O C D process brings back structured parking, then yes, we can talk about solving some of the parking problems that Mr. Conway referred to with structured parking, but if we don't get there, then we're going to have to resolve those problems with surface parking, or we're going to have to, in some other way, constrain vehicles coming into downtown Business District. The Board of Ed is going to move out of the Havemeyer Building, so the question is, what happens to that building? And we only really have one good, solid proposal in front of us, and Mr. Malkin will talk about that in a minute. And I think there's a reasonable amount of support for that. I can't pretend to gauge it. But if that project is moving forward, you still have the question of where does the Board of Ed go? And if the Board of Ed should go into the Senior Center, if that were to happen, where would the seniors go? The seniors, the Commission on Aging held a two-day conference, two and a half years ago, to study seven questions related to the future for seniors, and one of them was, what kind of facility should they be in? And they've been out visiting senior facilities in other communities. They've taken others with them. I think some of you have been on some of those trips. And over the course of the next 12 to 18 months, 12 to 18 months, not in the next few weeks, but over the course of the next 12 to 18 months, we will develop, in conjunction with the town planner, Planning and Zoning, the Commission on Aging, the seniors themselves, and the people who were in the Parks Department but now will become part of the Commission on Aging, the professional staff, we'll develop a requirements document that describes what we need for seniors and recommends what kind of building it should be. I think you can kind of see the logic in having seniors in a single-floor building, but that may not be where we come out. But if we want them in a single-floor building, it can't, it can't be the old Town Hall building, the current Senior Center. So you can see how these things all fit together. The money that's in this budget that you're going to be looking at in May provides money for more planning, more studies, more, but also more architecture and engineering work so that we can actually get to P and Z and request the P and Z approvals we need and get through those public processes after we've been through the other public processes. So I encourage you not to, not to go this route tonight. I don't think it's necessary. It's not going to improve the process at all. We already have commitments from the town planner, from the P O C D process itself, from the Commission on Aging, from the people who work with the seniors day in and day out, from the Board of Ed, from the Board of Ed's professional staff, from the first selectman's office, all the various parties that are interested in this process are already committed to working together. We're already working together. Not all of you have been exposed to all of those things, and I understand that, and I understand that uncertainty, but Vince DiMarco is in the process of forming a group that wants to act as a kind of a neighborhood association for the Central Business District, and that's fine. They can, they can develop their views and come in and make the points that they want to make, like every other public group that will appear at the various meetings that we have over the course of the next 12 to 24 months. This resolution isn't going to help that process, and it is going to, it is going to discourage some things, and I don't think that is what was intended by this in the first place. So I would encourage you tonight not to approve either the amendment or the motion itself. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. All right, Rick Crowe, to be followed by Joan Pankowski.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise tonight to oppose this amendment and motion directed by the moderator for the very reason as was presented, was planning first. And if we look at what these resolutions actually do, I take exception to the fact that they're saying that it does not encumber moving forward or does not commit to not planning. If we look at the projects that are in the proposed budget, there's three in the capital project plan, one having to do with the safety complex appropriation, the second being the Board of Ed relocation, architectural and engineering study or planning document, and then a downtown study or addition to the downtown and then a downtown study or addition to the downtown study, the fourth being the traffic lights that are in the parking fund, all of which this body has the power to reduce or eliminate from the budget, should we decide that we don't want to do those projects? That is our tool, if you will, similar to as I had brought forward, the MI process. The tool that we have to our planning is the budget, and that budget is coming to us. And in the budget are these projects or are these appropriation requests under the capital plan but are actually studies? Now, if we're going to develop a POCD and we're going to do something for the Central Business District, it would seem to me that I might want to know what a building is going to look like in that area if we're going to move, whether it be the seniors or the Board of Ed to it. So maybe some architectural and engineering studies should be done. This information would not also be helpful to this body, but also to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the general public, so that they're not trying to understand a concept or this vision. They have something concrete to see. If we go and pass these resolutions, although they're non-binding, it is in a sense given guidance and could come back to bite us as we go through the budget cycle and saying that we should not have those kind of things in the budget. So as much as I do support the reasons for this motion, I do not support the content of the motion or the amendment, because I feel it restricts us. And in planning, I'd rather have open doors rather than a restricted policy. And we have the ability coming forward to eliminate those appropriations or reduce them if we feel that they are inappropriate at that time, and I would rather use those tools as they come to us. So I would ask you not to vote these down, to leave our options open going forward through the budget process and potentially support the only few projects that we see coming to us that are technically studies and would only help in the planning process for the very plans that these folks are advocating for. And I support that wholeheartedly. But we need to do it in that process, not by a sense of the meeting, and some that have a lot of other problems have already been identified, especially where it says here, "should be given the highest priority by the town." Does that mean we've already said that in the next CIP program that this is the number one item? Have we already conditioned that? I mean, it's kind of a blank commitment. Who's charged with doing all this? It doesn't go back and say who is charged. Is it a consultant? Is it our Town Planner? Is it the Planning and Zoning Commission? There's no charge in here. They're very empty. And I just find that it's not a good directive for us going forward, especially with the budget cycle. We have better options and better tools. Thank you.
Mr. Crowe, just one moment. Is Joan Pankowski? To be followed by Joan Caldwell.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, moderator, for letting me speak tonight. I'm Joan Ziak Pankowski, President of Greats and a lifelong resident of Greenwich. Greats is a private group and Senior Center with the goal to enrich the lives of seniors. And right now, we have 2,000 registered seniors. Greats has just spent 20,000 for new tables and chairs and presently has a fund set up so family and friends may purchase a chair or table for someone special. I've been a volunteer attending member for 10 years, but knew the Senior Center through my mother's eyes, Catherine Ziak, for 20 years. Greats and many at the Senior Center became very concerned around Thanksgiving 06 when we heard we would no longer be run by the recreational department, as it has been for 33 years. But instead, the Council of the Aged would be charged, in charge of us, and we might be moving. And we got this information kind of all in the same package. We were told, Mr. Lash made the announcement, and it came as a surprise to all, because no meetings were held with us, but not also with the Council on the Aging or the Recreation Department. Then came more announcement. The Arts were moving to the Havemeyer Building, which we totally support because we'll all benefit by that. But the Board of Education was going to be moved into the Senior Center, and the seniors were going to be moved somewhere. And we just weren't sure where. There were no coming questions during the holiday times. So it was a very, very stressful holiday times for all of the people concerned. Greats asked to have a meeting with Mr. Lash. He agreed. 14 members of our board met with Mr. Lash on January 23rd, with Mr. Sisliano, the Department of Recreation, attending. We were told that the Council on the Aging would be in charge of the seniors. This was a big surprise because the Council was voting on that the very next day, January 24th. Taking on the seniors would mean many changes for the Council, all of this to begin this coming July 1st. The seniors have been told everything will stay the way it was, and we're not sure. We don't know what to believe anymore. We read about the new center in a new location. It sounds great. That may well be wonderful. And I've been to some senior centers that are all on one floor, very modern, but we've been told that our new Senior Center will be smaller, and it will be moderated and will be sharing some offices with people. We don't understand that. It may be wonderful to have this new place, but we want to guarantee we can stay where we are until something good or better is in place. For my mother and many older members today at the Senior Center, it is a home away from home. Instead of being alone, my mother could eat breakfast and lunch with her friends. Many seniors right now don't shop and don't cook for themselves when they're in their 70s and 80s. For me, it's more like a club. Since I'm a recent widow, I eat lunch there almost daily with new and old friends rather than eating alone. So the Senior Center must have a cafeteria to provide the services that many of the seniors need and a just regular, healthy participation basis and for the social nature of what they are about. Tomorrow at 10:30, Greats is having an open meeting, and that means we have invited the three selectmen, the Council on the Aging, anyone who has a voice in the seniors to come and attend. And we are tired of just getting the news of what we read in the paper. We know it's inaccurate in so many ways. And so we are asking the selectmen to come and tell us what they, they know. And as, tonight, I'm asking any of you that would like to attend. It's 10:30 tomorrow at the Senior Center. In conclusion, it's, it's Greats understanding that the RTM still runs this town and not our selectmen. Thank you.
All right. Joan Caldwell. Okay. Mr. Malkin, to be followed by Todd Ladonia. Yes, I see other people are interested. These are people who signed up in advance. I'm going to get to them. So, Mr. Malkin.
Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM, thank you very much for permitting a guest to speak before you. I must say that this is my first experience speaking to the RTM, and I can see how one can become a senior waiting for the end of the meeting. I speak on behalf of the Greenwich Center for the Arts, which was conceived only after the Board of Education in 2003 announced its intention to move from the decrepit Havemeyer Building and which it confirmed again in 2006. From inception, the Greenwich Center for the Arts has been designed to be consistent with the 1998 Plan of Conservation and Development approved by this RTM, and as a facility that will serve the entire Greenwich community, seniors and youth, performers and audiences, students and teachers, right in the center of the Town of Greenwich as called for by the Plan of Conservation and Development. The Havemeyer Building has decayed. It does not comply with building, fire, health, or American with Disability Code requirements. It is truly a hazard. Occupancy without restoration exposes the Town of Greenwich to enormous potential liability. A fire in that place without sprinklers, stuffed with cartons full of papers for 40, 50 years is a really frightening potential that you all ought to pay attention to. To restore the Havemeyer Building for any legal use would cost approximately $20 million, and the building would still not be efficient for use by any office type, whether it's the Board of Education or anything else. And of course, for the Board of Education to use or restore a building, it would have to leave for at least two years while that work went on and come back in, so that whether the Board of Education moves to a new location or stayed at this present location, it would have to get out of that building for a considerable period of time. There'd be two consequences to the sense of the meeting as amended, and I oppose the sense of the meeting resolution and the amendment together. First, the $910,000 recommended by the Budget Committee of the Board of Estimate and Taxation for Architectural and Engineering Studies for a new headquarters for the Board of Education would be frozen and would not be available. And its evacuation of the Board of Education to a safe and efficient facility would be postponed. Second, without an approved plan for a new Board of Education headquarters, it is very unlikely that this body, the RTM, would approve any lease of the Havemeyer Building to the center. And despite what has been said about expediting the preparation of a revised plan of conservation and development, you all know that it will take at least two years and could take longer. I hope you realize that the cost of construction is increasing at the rate of almost 15% a year, so you would be raising the cost of anything to do with that building by about 30% at the present rate if you went and delayed the work on that for a new plan of conservation and development. So it could either cost the Town $26 million to fix it for an inefficient use for itself, or it could raise the cost for an alternative use which would serve the entire community. We do have an extraordinarily dedicated board that has devoted now almost four years to this program. We have had meetings and presentations to, I think, all but one of the districts of the RTM. We have had tours of the building for literally hundreds of people in, come right through the building and who have seen the plans. If the resolution is approved and it results in a two-year delay or more, as I think is very likely, having heard the discussions tonight, before a Plan of Conservation and Development is proposed, I do not think that we can hold the group that is willing to sponsor and pay for this. Frankly, you, you may not have heard yet, but the Bruce is going to be looking for almost $60 million for its expansion. There are several other programs in town that are going to go to the same people that we have had commitments from, and they're not going to wait for this Plan of Conservation and Development. And in the meantime, you better get the Board of Education out of that building before there's a fire or there's some other damage, because the risk is really tremendous. If you haven't been through that building and seen the wooden construction, the lack of sprinklers, the piles and boxes of cardboard, cartons and papers, it's a scary situation. We believe that these plans for the Center, Greenwich Center for the Arts, are consistent with the history and the tradition and the best of Greenwich, whether it's the Bruce Museum, the Nathaniel Witherell, Benny Park. This is the time, frankly, for people to rise up in the 21st century and do something that will probably have more positive impact for all of the citizens of Greenwich for a town facility. Over 100 groups have signed up indicating they want to use the facility, rent the facility for use. And this includes teaching, music classes, dance classes, performances, and I'm not going to speak about the building because the discussion tonight is about a resolution, a resolution that could have a disastrous impact either because of a horrendous problem in the Havemeyer Building without its having been restored, a 20 to maybe $26 million cost for the town to restore the Havemeyer Building and have it not in an effective way to use for office space, and the loss of what is now budgeted at about $30 million to be a gift to the Town of Greenwich, which even if there had to be a new building built either for the seniors or for the Board of Education, would net save the Town of Greenwich about $15 million. To me, the, it is so clear, I find it difficult frankly to understand, the resolution that's been presented. The RTM will control this process. The RTM must approve the lease for the building. The RTM must be assured that there will be no expenditure by the town in connection with the redevelopment or operation of the building. Those would need conditions of the lease. I urge that you vote against the resolution on its own or as amended. Thank you for this opportunity.
Todd Ladonia, to be followed by Christine Edwards.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, guests, Todd Ladonia from District 8. I want to thank Mr. Lash for speaking so eloquently tonight and for taking this resolution as seriously as he obviously is. I, however, find myself in a quandary as I rise to support both the amendment and the resolution and it being a sense of the meeting resolution. As we all know, these things not only don't have any teeth, but very rarely have strong enough gums. I do believe, however, it is time that we as a body, again, put the rest of the boards and legislators in our town on notice. We are here. We want to be consulted. We want to give our input, as well as the input from our constituents, on the development of our town-owned properties. The Arts Center has been following a plan for several years by making presentations and explaining things. I don't see why this will short-circuit their plans as long as they continue to openly discuss and present their plans to the public, which I'm sure they will. I am certainly not rising to put a slowdown on any specific projects, but some of our town fathers don't seem to hold our plan for conservation and development in any great esteem. We are not writing law with this resolution. There are no bans going into effect. This body is only giving a sense of the spirit that we wish to instill about the concept of a comprehensive plan filled with ideas from the broadest of bases, not just the Imagineers from Disney World. Thank you.
Christine Edwards, to be followed by Frank Puzlusny.
Thank you, and thank you all for staying here, who've been sitting in your seats as the night gets later. I was a participant four years ago, April, in what was called the Conference on Aging, and it looked at what was happening with seniors in the town in different places to perhaps put the Senior Center, one of which came up was the Havemeyer Building at the same time that the Greenwich Council of the Arts began to look at that as well, only the group that began and continued in many committee meetings for multipurpose centers, for senior housing and such certainly didn't have the money to do architectural drawings. The point that I want to bring forward is we've been a town that seems to be really programmed by consultants. We've got a lot of money that we can throw ahead at consultants, and they may be very experienced in what they do, but most towns, when they look at a central business district, be it, as an example, Boulder, Colorado, in a period of six months, put together a charrette and put together an entire plan for their downtown. It's one of many, many towns throughout the United States. I don't want to belabor how many have done this, as part of a charrette that includes public import, the public coming forward, special interest groups as well, because we all have special interest groups, city planners. But the public is a great part of what a charrette is and the vision that the public has. I have an 82-year-old who lives with me, my mother's best friend, not my mother, but she looks for it every day to go to the Senior Center, have her breakfast, have her group of people, including a 97-year-old who walks every day to the post office. Their main comment that I hear from all the ladies and gentlemen that I've spoken to there is, "We don't want to go off the avenue. That's where we get all of our activity afterwards. We have our little lunch, and we go for a walk." The idea of going up to the Town Hall may seem great if you need to have a tag bus to get you there, but not if you've already walked three blocks or come from Agnes Morley to sit and have your cup of coffee and your homemade muffin on Wednesday mornings. Don't miss it. It's only 25 cents. And you look at what, what they're looking for is having that wonderful cafeteria, and maybe, maybe if the Arts Council does wind up with Havemeyer, we should be having them for part of their dollar-a-year lease, have the Senior Center there with perhaps a solarium looking over the beautiful green and an active cafeteria that could be used for catering for other purposes. But what we need to be able to have that kind of vision is really a charrette, not just a town planner, and certainly not just consultants brought in. We as a public, and we as the RTM have that responsibility to our constituency, to have them involved in what the plan and the vision is for downtown. It certainly isn't fun for the seniors to see those spaces in front It certainly isn't fun for the seniors to see those spaces in front of the Senior Centers be taken away as part of the plan to increase the green and lower, again, more parking possibilities.
Mr. Porter, please state your point of order.
It's very late tonight, and I would like to have the speaker, and with courtesy to all extended, to get to a point.
The point is, public participation, Mr. Porter, all of us. And I thank you for that, and I will end it with this point, that if we're going to be having true planning, let's go to a charrette and really see what the true vision is that the entire public and groups want to see happen to the downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Pozlusny, to be followed by Mr. Lori.
I'm due to the R T M, and I'm very awkward at understanding still, trying to learn the politics of our town. But in the area of planning, my profession is industrial design. I take ideas, and I plan, and I map out, and I make ideas realities. One thing I absolutely do not understand that's occurring here is that this incredibly affluent, wonderful town that I live in has all these incredible dollar-value budgets and these incredible opportunities to do these incredible projects, yet I never see a drawing, I never see sketches, I never see development of a project. If this town is going to get its act together and plan itself, it better start doing it now. We have a huge density growth one block away from Greenwich Avenue. The Millbank and Mason Streets have transformed themselves in the last two years. In the next five years, there are going to be parking obligations, overages of parking from all those new clustered residents spillaging over already to the Greenwich downtown area that are going to collide, these two worlds are going to collide, with the development of the business district with this clustered, high-density, regional residential development going on. But we also are, I made a point earlier, now it's very appropriate. We are in a corridor of industrial design, engineering, urban development universities with incredible programs, and I think instead of spending a lot of money on consultants all the time, we ought to reach out, and I'm willing to do that, reach out to some of these universities and get some of these student consultations and professorships to create programs and start getting these services to us. They are looking for us. This is a golden opportunity for them and a golden opportunity for us. I'd like to see that come together. That's all I have to say.
Roger Lori. Mr. Lori has moved the previous question. It's been moved and seconded. The motion for the previous question is a motion to cut off debate. It is not debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. If you are in favor of immediately proceeding to vote on the pending motion to amend, you should vote in favor of Mr. Lori's motion for the previous question. If you would like to continue discussion, you should vote no. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Randall Huffman motion to amend item 21. We will need the results of that vote before proceeding further, so I ask that you expedite the voting.
(inaudible).
Yes, unfortunately, we are voting on procedurally a motion to amend. I believe the result of this vote is going to be the result on item 21. We would, in any event, we would require another vote. If the amendment is adopted, we would then vote on item 21 as amended. If it is rejected, we would vote on item 21 as presented.
(inaudible).
We have the results of the vote on Mr. Huffman's motion to amend item 21. Those in favor, 93; opposed, 41; abstaining, 5. That motion has carried. So item 21 as amended is now before us. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item 21 is amended, and that will be the final vote of the evening. But we will need to await, to adjourn until we have the results of that final vote. Thank you, Mr. Tuthill. I have the results of the vote on item 21 as amended. Those in favor, and as it turns out, I suppose the paper was right, we did take this up on Tuesday. Those in favor, 86; opposed, 48; abstaining, 3. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming, staying until the end, and have a very safe trip home.